Gentlemen, if you'd be kind enough to take your seats. The October 6, 2010 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. I make this announcement as a cautionary announcement, no reason to believe that it would ever take place, but this ability is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system, so should alarms activate, please leave through the exits. Our marshals will tell you when it's safe to re-enter, but as I say, it's just an admonition. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Pastor Benny Haukes, Victory Outreach Las Vegas, and please remain standing for the pledge.
If I could have every head bowed and every eye closed, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you this beautiful morning, God, and we just ask, God, your blessing upon, Lord, this day as well, God, as a meeting here as it progresses today, Lord. I pray that you would give, my God, everyone, God, the mayor, God, pro tem, Lord, mayor, everybody, Lord, that is here in the council, wisdom, God, discernment, that they would be able to make the right decisions, Lord. I pray, God, that you would just take hold, God, of this entire meeting, God, throughout this day, Lord, for we ask you this, in Jesus' name, amen.
This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and we're going to start off with Councilwoman Tarkanian presenting our first three ceremonial items, including honoring the October Citizens of the Month. Three, right? All right, make it fast.
Boy, make it fast. Do we have the volunteers from the Neon Museum here? Could you come up here and stand up here while I speak, please? And is Mr. Marion here also? Yeah, oh yeah, I couldn't see you. Okay. I wanted them to stand here so you could see this fine group of individuals. As I give you a little bit of a background, the Neon Museum was established as a nonprofit organization in 1996 to collect and exhibit neon signs, the classic Las Vegas art form, and dedicated individuals from the private sector, government entities have worked tirelessly to promote the preservation of these national treasures. And I know because I was around at that time, and there wasn't much encouragement, and there wasn't much support, but they kept at it, and they came to make some great contributions to our Neon Museum. The mission is to collect, preserve, study, and exhibit neon signs and assorted artifacts, to inspire educational and cultural enrichment for diverse members of our international community. And it's amazing how nationally people are recognizing the art form of our neon signs and mentioning it in some of the national publications. Each of the more than 150 signs in the collection can be used to tell a unique story about who created it, what inspired it, where and when it was made, and how it fits into the development of Las Vegas and its rich history. Changes and trends in design and technology are also illustrated in the pieces that range from the 1930s, um, were you born by that time here? Okay, and, uh, the Neon Museum is currently restoring, I had to do that because he was mean to me this morning before then. The Neon Museum is currently restoring the historic La Concha motel lobby for use as its visitor's center so that the museum can offer expanded public hours. And the La Concha, a sweeping iconic structure, was designed by famed African-American architect Paul Revere Williams. The building is on the City of Las Vegas Historic Register. I have been fortunate to have served for many years on the Neon Museum Board, and I'm very aware of the many, many hours of hard work which each of the volunteers have put into the project. And today we are honoring those volunteers. The museum relies significantly on their efforts to meet the needs of the more than 1,000 monthly visitors they have now. And first, we recognize Mr. Bill Marion, who's chairman of the Board of Trustees and one of the foremost volunteers of the group. Bill, would you come up here? Volunteers provide a range of much-needed assistance. What they do is general office support, they assist on photo shoots and on special event crowd control, they help out whenever the help is needed. But the most significant contribution is as tour docents. At least once a week, the volunteers of the Neon Museum devote hours to providing guided tours of the museum boneyard. And the tours are a combination of sign design history, Las Vegas cultural history, and personal oral history. With passion and dedication, these tours provided by these volunteers provide museum visitors and tourists and locals alike with a unique and personal glimpse into one of America's greatest cities in the world and its most celebrated art form, the Neon Museum. And I am going to turn it over to you, Bill, so you can say a few words, and then we will give out the recognition.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm really pleased that you are honoring the volunteers today. The great thing about these guys, when they do tours, and it's the wonderful thing about the Neon Boneyard, every sign has a story for everybody. It may be when you visited here as a kid, you saw that sign, or it may be that you grew up here and you ate dinner at the Silver Slipper buffet, but all of those signs have stories. Each one of these people has a different interpretation of each of those signs as well. So you hear very different stories anytime you take a tour with a different guide. And it's not that one is right, one is wrong, it's like these signs have multiple stories in them. We couldn't do this work without you. Right now, the museum is under construction, as Councilwoman Tarkanian said, so the only way to visit it is through guided tours. But when we're open, and I am certain we're going to be open by this time next year as a full-fledged operating museum, it's going to be a great day for Las Vegas. So to all our volunteers, we couldn't do it without you. Thank you very much.
And we think, and we, um, support volunteer efforts so much, that we are giving to you one of our highest honors, and that is our Citizen of the Month. So all of you are Citizens of the Month, and we will have this displayed, you volunteers, we couldn't put all your names on it, but it will be displayed so people will know our support for the volunteers and our support for the Neon Center. And I know that not all of you are here today. I wondered if maybe you, Bill, because you know their names, could go through. We might just give, Alex Silver.
Oh, Amy Raymer. April Mastrom. Assemblywoman, April Mastrom.
Good for you, April.
Brett Mazel. Catherine Borg is not here today. Devon Watkins is not here today. Jennifer Cleven is not here today, but we appreciate that name.
And we recognize them by saying their names because they have done all of the work. And many times, people at work or in classes, they can't come.
Justin Pavel is actually working at the Boneyard right now. Kat Valentine is not here today. Mr. Yang is not here today. We have a lot of volunteers. We could use more. Mitchell Cohen. Nancy Hardy is not here. Paul Witsel. And then Tina Ballant, who isn't here, and Victoria Lawrence.
These are our volunteers who are here representing all of them. Let's give them a big round of applause. I want them all to know how much we appreciate their volunteer efforts. Volunteerism is one of the most important aspects of keeping a community vibrant and united. We thank you very much, and we thank you very much, and I'm going to give you the rest of these to take them. And please know that this is one of our highest honors. That's how much we think of you. Thank you very much. October is noted as Disability Employment Awareness Month, and we have Melissa here today that we wanted to honor. Melissa Abundo, is she here? She's not here. Well, you know what? We'll wait and see, maybe she'll be able to, maybe she'll be here by the end of this, and we'll see. Then I guess I can turn to the other honor I get to bestow today, or the recognition I'm able to make, and I'm happy to honor again National Fire Prevention Week. The history of National Fire Prevention Week has its roots from the Great Chicago Fire, which occurred on October 9, 1871, and that date has remained in the minds of firefighters throughout the history of our country. The fire burned for 27 hours, killed more than 250 people, left more than 100,000 homeless, and destroyed nearly 18,000 buildings. Although the exact cause of the fire has never been determined, they do have one popular legend that blames the cow of Mrs. Catherine O'Leary for the blaze after it kicked over a lantern and started a barn on fire. Regardless of if that legend's correct or not, whatever the cause, the fire or how the fire started, it nearly destroyed Chicago, and firefighters and equipment from as far as St. Louis and New York City responded to the blaze. So since that time, we, the United States Government, through its presidents, and, well, for example, they started recognizing it in 1911 as a day. The President, Woodrow Wilson, issued the first National Fire Prevention Day, and now we have a National Fire Prevention Week that is observed Sunday through Saturday of the week of October 9, in recognition of that terrible fire and all those who helped to put it out. And so this year's Fire Prevention Week theme is, they have a different theme every year, and the theme this year is smoke alarms, a sound you can live with. Smoke alarms were introduced in the early 1970s, have saved countless of lives since then. Many communities have fire codes that require smoke alarms wherever a person sleeps. Most fatal fires occur between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and the first line of defense for you at that time is to have a smoke alarm that can awaken you and give you time to sleep. Smoke alarms reduce the chances of death in a fire by half. Nearly 900 lives could be saved annually if every home had a working smoke detector. Even just one smoke detector reduces the chances of death by almost half. Deaths due to fire have decreased by half since the invention of the smoke detector. And of course, most deaths occur in the night when a fire hits people who are sleeping. We also need to emphasize for the firefighters that smoke detectors should be installed at every level of your house. One level won't do it. If you have a multi-level home, you should have a detector at each level. And of course, sometimes, and I'm one of those who do that too, you have a smoke detector, and then you forget to check on the batteries and things like that, and the most often failure of a smoke detector is the failure, is the failure of missing or disconnected batteries. So change batteries twice a year, clean the detectors also. Now remember that smoke detectors only wake you up. You should know tonight what you will do if you are ever awakened by your smoke detector, and make sure your family and friends know also, and know that the first thing to do is get out and stay out. And I'd like to have Greg Yaman come here and stand with me and maybe say a few words because we, the mayor, and the members of the Las Vegas City Council proudly proclaim October 3 through 9, 2010, as Fire Prevention Week. And I'm going to turn the mic over to Greg.
Thank you, Councilwoman. This is a very important week in the fire service, so important that a President of the United States has declared it as National Fire Prevention Week. When people, when most people think about the fire service, and I was the same way, growing up, you think of fire trucks, you see the engines, you see the license sirens, and you think that that's what the fire service is about. Well, the mission of the United States Fire Administration is fire prevention. That's our number-one goal, is to prevent the fires. What most people see is the, is the result of something gone wrong, or fire prevention measures that weren't followed, or an accidental fire, and then they see the lights and the sirens and the fancy trucks. But that's not what the fire service is about. That's a big part of what we do, but our mission is to prevent fires. And we can't do that alone. All we can do is help educate. Kids do a great job. We go into schools almost every week, sometimes four or five days a week, and we teach kids what to do in the event of a fire, and they're very good at it. And over the last few, well, the last number of years, we encourage them, go home and teach your parents, because your parents are the ones that need to know this. Kids do a great job, but hopefully the parents are starting to, and most of us do, we understand the basics of the smoke detectors and their importance and how to get out of a home. But this weekend, from 10 to 2 o'clock, at all of our City of Las Vegas fire stations, we're having an open house. We encourage all of you to bring your families, come by the fire station, get to meet the firefighters. You can see the fire engines, the trucks, all the equipment that we carry on those engines. You can ask any questions about fire prevention, and bring a lunch, have a picnic in the yard. We have parks alongside a lot of our fire stations, and just make a fun day of it. And Councilwoman, thank you for this recognition for the fire service.
Well, I'll tell you, the city's always very, very proud to support that, what you're doing as the firefighter supporting our city. Thank you. Yeah, I'm just going to say, you know, Melissa isn't here yet, so I just want to say that this is, October is noted as Disability Employment Awareness Month, charging each of us to be more aware of the necessity to provide opportunities for those who have special needs. And we were recognizing today Melissa Abundo, and we will give you the recognition and have you take it to her. This is a young woman who has a disease that causes her to only be able to see as if you were looking through a straw, no peripheral vision. And I think the reason why we were honoring her today is because she has taken her place into the working community, and she has shown that just because individuals have special needs in certain functional areas, it doesn't mean that they can't adapt, that they can't utilize other abilities, with the result that their capabilities are quite high. And we ask employers to recognize this and support the hiring of those who have these disabilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Okay, for our next item, Councilman Stavros Anthony is going to make a special recognition of a special person in the community who's dedicated to making children's lives a little brighter. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Everybody doing okay? Good. It's, uh, actually my honor today to recognize a group of individuals who, for the past four years, have made and distributed over 68,000 toys in the, in Southern Nevada. The name of that organization is Toys for Smiles, and I'd like to ask the founder and president Rex Doty to come up, and his wife, who's a secretary and treasurer, Mary Doty, would you please come up here? Toys for Smiles began four years ago with a conversation of a couple of individuals at Faith Lutheran Church here in Las Vegas. It began with three volunteers. Since then, they've grown to 50 volunteers, and what they do is they collect scrap wood, they put it in their garages, and they have machines in their garages that make toys just like this, which is some outstanding craftsmanship. And then they distribute it to kids in a valley to make them smile a little bit more. They have distributed over 5,000 toys to Nellis Air Force Base, 7,000 toys to Catholic charities, and over 15,000 toys to the Clark County School District. Toys for Smiles was recently awarded the 2010 Jefferson Award for Nevada, which is a prestigious award that recognizes individuals throughout the country who perform public service. And today, it's a, it's a kind of a great day today for Rex and Mary because they're getting ready to go into the next phase of Toys for Smiles. They may be moving on to just garages, to something else, and I'm going to have Rex explain that to everyone.
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, it's been quite a ride, and, uh... We started out Mal over there, he was one of the first two that came and helped me make toys the first night, and he's still with me. Paul is from Storage West, he supplies the carts and boxes for us to get toys away in. Larry over there makes toys in his house. We've been doing this for four years now, and six garages. We used to joke that every toy has 25 miles on it before it gets to the kid. And it's guys like Mal and Larry that took care of this thing. And we were looking for a building. We knew there were a lot of buildings in town, and we just had to find somebody with a good heart. Well, Frank Gadskey of Gadskey Commercial Real Estate Services found that person. And a month ago, we were given for one year a 3,400-square-foot building to make toys in. And not only, yeah, good on the hand. Not only does that allow us to make more toys, it allows us to have people like you come down and help us make these toys. We want children involved with them, we coat them with mineral oil, we want to get youth groups and so forth involved, and we've got over 70 clients right now, and one of the special ones that goes right along with your operation there, once a month, we go to the Blind Center in Nevada, and they put mineral oil on toys and give them, they say they give them away to needy kids. And it's just, it's a special operation. And what we do, we need wood, we make them out of scrap wood, so if you know anybody who has scrap wood as a lumber business or anything, please let them contact us. Equipment, we can always use equipment, and now that we got a building, we got to pay utility bills and insurance and this and that, which we never had to do before, so we could also use some help in that area. How many of yous got a toy in here this morning? And the business card? Okay, on the way out, I want to ask any of yous that didn't have a toy, take one and find a needy child to give it to. There's not a greater joy in the world. If nothing else, put it in your glove box, and once you see some kid having a bad day, give it to him and just walk away. It'll break your heart, it's just a joy. And the other thing, on the back of the business card, it has some instructions. The Shriner's have allowed us to hook up with them this year for the Justin Timberlake Shriner PGA Golf Tournament at the end of the month. They've given us a website, and a one-day visitor pass is $15. If anybody goes on that website and uses my name, Rex, R-E-X, as a promotion code, half of that funds go back to Toys for Smiles, and we, you know, we greatly need it. So if you're going to the golf tournament, know anybody going to the golf tournament, let them know about this, pick up a card on the way out, and don't forget the kids because they go to see Justin Timberlake. So that's what we're working on, I say, with this new facility and everything. I just wanted to thank these guys, and mainly thank the Lord for what he's done for me.
Thanks, Rex, that was great. And if I could just reiterate, there is a table outside, take one of the toys, and if there's any way you can help Toys for Smiles, please do whatever you can. This is a great organization, and with that, it is my honor on behalf of the mayor and the city council to proclaim October 6, 2010, as Toys for Smiles Day in the City of Las Vegas. There you go.
I apologize, I, you know, Greg had told us about how the firefighters concentrate on fire prevention, and I just wanted to say that Tim Samansky from our fire department goes out and meets with groups, senior homes, neighborhood associations, and he continuously talks about what we can do for fire prevention, and he is able to get for us these fire extinguishers that you can use, and just keep in your home and have it there quickly to get a fire out quick, in just a short time and stop it from spreading. I wanted to tell you, they don't cost very much. I personally am getting some for my seniors, for them to use, and I hope that others might consider it also. A good thing to have around. I had some apples the other day that were in that plastic thing, you know, where you keep beach of the apples in the little separate area, and it touched a fire, it touched my stove, and all of a sudden, I had the plastic flaming all over. If I had had this, I could have squished it out fast, and I just wanted to mention... I can afford a squish here and there. Okay, thank you.
For our final item, I'd like to invite Planning and Development Director Margot Wheeler to join us at the podium. The city recently won five prestigious awards from the American Planning Association, and I'm going to ask Margot to tell us a little bit about it. Margot?
Thank you, ma'am. The first of our awards that we'll discuss this morning, and I promise I'll be quick, is for distinguished leadership by an elected official, and that is City of Las Vegas Councilman Councilman Barlow has been active in planning activities prior to becoming a councilman, but particularly when the 2008 National Conference was here. The one-day workshop was held on West Las Vegas, and he led that effort and has continued to work to implement the plans and ideas that came forward at that time to the betterment of the community, and he was recognized for that. I'm going to run through them quickly and then have you do some comment. Okay? Okay. And then for appointed, our Citizen Planner of the Year was City of Las Vegas Planning Commissioner Steve Evans. Commissioner Evans has been on the planning commission as the appointee of the mayor pro tem. He has also served on the Neon Museum Board and has been active in all of the community efforts within the downtown area. The Professional Planner of the Year was Flynn Fag, the Acting Deputy Director of Planning and Development. Mr. Fag also organized this year's conference, and the best part was while he was the coordinator for everything involved in the conference, he had no idea he had been nominated and was completely surprised when the award was announced. We also won, as the planning department, two awards. One was for the plan for the Neon Museum and Boneyard Park, begun in 2004, when we applied for funds for urban trails, not just trails for horses and, and green parks that we think of in the Northwest, but the trails that link all of our wonderful landmarks within the downtown and lead to the Neon Boneyard and the park that will be, is being created there right now. And then lastly, our Walkable Communities Community Outreach Plan, where we are out in all of the neighborhoods and the communities, creating downtown cores for the different types of neighborhoods we have throughout the city, because not everybody wants to live just in a high-rise downtown or in a rural area such as we have in the Northwest, but in great neighborhoods like Summerlin and West Las Vegas and in the Meadows areas. So we were lucky and fortunate enough to have received these awards this year, and I very much appreciate the council and the manager's office allowing us to celebrate that this morning. Mr. Barlow?
Well, I really had nothing to say, Margot, but thank you so very much for, for the opportunity. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a great honor that was bestowed upon me. However, I would like to accept this award on behalf of the many elected officials and my colleagues who support the development and redevelopment taking place in and around the Las Vegas community. I was born and raised here, and as I share with people all the time, my seed was planted here, and what you see standing before you is the fruit of that seed. And I truly believe in giving back to the community because my mother and father taught me that at a very early age, that it's about giving back. And that's what I do every single day, give back to the community to make it a better place for our young people. I want to make sure... I want to make sure that the position that I leave is in a -- is set up in a framework that someone can step right in and go right to work and continue to improve and build upon this great city and the great legacies that are left behind these men and women that are standing around me here today. And of course, each and every one of you here today that gives back on a daily basis, that it's really about building a community and making sure that we do all that we can before we leave this earth to make it a better place for everyone and for generations to come. So congratulations to those of you that have received the awards, and I would like to accept this award not only on behalf of myself, but on behalf of all elected officials that continue to put their life on the line for the betterment of this community every single day. Thank you so very much.
All right, we'll call item number ten. Any items from the morning session that the council, staff, and/or the applicant wish to be strictly or held in the bayels to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number forty-six. Is interlocal agreement between Cities of Las Vegas, North Las Vegas Henderson, and Clark County for emergency driver training. Staff says to strike. And item number sixty is report possible action regarding status of community recycling. Staff like that be held in the best until our next meeting on October the 20th, 2010. Are there any other items, councilmembers? Senator, Your Honor, I make a motion to bring these two items forward and take the appropriate action, please.
Okay. Before we vote, as to item number forty-one, I'm going to ask that that be trailed to the afternoon after our closed session, and then we'll consider that at that time. It'll be the first item of this afternoon. That's item number forty-one. Okay? Other than that, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item eleven is approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of September 1, 2010. May I have the motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor, no. No additions or deletions. I make a motion to approve minutes, please.
Right, thank you. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Items twelve through fifty-six, with the exception of forty-one and forty-six, are one of the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward at this time? All right, may I have the motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor, no. Make a motion to approve items twelve through fifty-six, with exceptions of forty-one and forty-six, please.
Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifty-seven is a report. Yes?
Could I just ask that on this item relating to the new pistol permit, item number thirty-three, that these -- this is a legal aspect of being able to sell pistols and guns, and that it is overseen by Metro and other agencies? I just want to make that clear, because some people called my office that didn't understand.
Okay, I think the record will reflect that. Is that appropriate, Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman. Item fifty-seven is a report from Ed Farmer, General Manager of Big League Dreams, regarding an update and overview of operations and activities of Big League Dreams located on the southwest corner of Pecos Road and Washington Avenue, and this, of course, is in Board Three. Ms. Bashna?
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Billy Bastian, Department Director for Leisure Services. Joining me at the podium today is Ed Farmer. He is the General Manager for the Big League Dreams Sports Attraction that is located within our Freedom Park on the most east side, which is the Pecos and Washington side. Ed is going to give you a brief overview of the programs and activities that are occurring in the park and describe the amenities for you.
Thank you, Billy. Mayor, city council staff members. Again, my name is Ed Farmer. I'm the General Manager of Big League Dreams Sports Park, which is located on Washington and Pecos, right around the corner from the most famous barber shop in Las Vegas.
Well, the oldest barber shop in Las Vegas.
That's true.
And the oldest barber in Las Vegas for that matter.
I would never say that.
As long as we're talking about age this morning, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry, sir, he couldn't be here today, though.
I appreciate you allowing me to come before you today. I'd like to just go over a few items, give you a little bit of an update of what's happening with Big League Dreams since we've opened in January. Since our opening, we've had over a hundred and forty thousand spectators and players in tournament and league play come through the facility. We've hosted over one thousand teams on tournament weekends and currently have a hundred and fifty softball teams, seventy-five adult indoor soccer teams, and forty youth baseball teams currently playing in our facility right now. Big League Dreams Las Vegas is quickly becoming known as the tournament play for outside teams to come into the valley and utilize the Big League Dreams facility as a hub for tournament play. We currently have more than seventy-five employees currently employed by Big League Dreams, which certainly helps our economy in today's situation that we're all in. We're attempting to become an integral part of the community and worked hard with such organizations so far as after-school All-Stars. We look forward to many more, including a canned food drive benefiting Three Square coming up in November, and a toy drive benefiting help of Southern Nevada in conjunction with some future youth baseball tournaments. We made the facility available to youth baseball and softball teams free of charge during our first few months of play. We've hosted some very prestigious tournaments, including Youth Baseball World Series, and have some additional large tournaments coming up, including the Advertising World Series and the Police World Series, which bring a tremendous amount of visitors to Las Vegas. Mayor Pro Tem Gary Reese is going to be the honorary first pitch thrower in the Police World Series. So he says he's warming up right now? Luckily, it's slow pitch, so we're okay, I hope. I would be remiss if I did not take just a moment to thank Lonnie Zimmerman from Leisure Services. Lonnie's been an integral part of our transition and been very, very helpful to us getting used to exactly what's expected of Big League Dreams. We meet on a regular basis, and his entire staff has been just a tremendous help to us at Big League Dreams. I appreciate the mayor and council for their foresight to make the Freedom Park area one of the nicest parks in the nation. We've had just tremendous amount of compliments from our outside visitors that have come to the park for the first time since they've seen it before the renovation, and just we really get a tremendous amount of comments about how great the facility is and how much better that it is now that all of the renovations have been done, not just Big League Dreams, but the entire park area. I'd also like to thank Mayor Pro Tem Gary Reese for his hands-on support, both to me and our staff, and I appreciate all of the comments that he gives us, and I try to keep him updated on a regular basis, seeing how we are in his ward. So thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. One of our biggest allies has been Mr. Tom Funstein. Some of you may know him. He is the U-S-A State Director for Slow Pitch Softball. He was going to give a brief presentation today. His daughters actually have a grandbaby, a grandchild right now, so he was unable to make it, so hopefully, congratulations to him. One of the things that he was going to talk about is how he has basically moved his entire tournament program over from a neighboring community and is running one hundred percent of his tournament play at Big League Dreams. And one of the things also that he wanted to make sure that you were aware, up until Big League Dreams was built, he had no interest in bringing some of the larger-style world tournaments to Las Vegas because of the amenities that were there. And now the Big League Dreams has been built, and you've made this tremendous renovation in the Freedom Park area. We are actively pursuing and expect to have some very more prestigious tournaments in the upcoming years. So again, just a brief overview of what's going on. I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, be happy to take them at this time.
We appreciate your presentation here. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, I was just going to touch a little bit on the restaurants we have down there, as well as the indoor soccer facility we have and the other uses that we have for that.
Gratefully, what we have is we have six replica stadiums of Major League Baseball parks, shrunk down to about three-quarter scale size for both adult slow pitch softball, youth baseball, and girls' fast pitch play. We have two full-service restaurants onsite, eight-station batting cage, and an indoor soccer arena. The indoor soccer arena is becoming extremely popular, especially with our change of weather climate from very hot to very cold. It's really taken off and done a great job for us. We also do a lot of company parties and picnics. We just hosted this past Saturday a thousand-person company event, which was a Nevada State Bank picnic. So we've become very versatile, and it is becoming well, well-known that we are there. It's a community-style event area, and we can do a lot of things there, so.
Can I make a comment?
Certainly.
Mayor Pro Tem, just as, you know, I work with Mr. Funstein on a regular basis, and this facility has become so well-known throughout the West Coast. I know you have other fields in other locations, but everybody wants to come to Vegas. So this is really a fabulous thing, certainly Mayor Pro Tem's ward in the downtown area of the City of Las Vegas. So I'm so pleased with what you guys are doing there and bringing so many people into the City of Las Vegas and recognizing what a great place it is to come. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Well, thanks for a great report.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We've already voted and approved, but there were some people who were interested in knowing a little bit about item forty-seven, the insurance. Is there anybody from staff that could just take two or three minutes and explain it a little bit? Because there were several people that work for the city that were interested in that background. Is there anybody?
If I could, Councilwoman, I talked with Mr. Vincent about this prior to the meeting, and I think the plan was to have the individuals who were here to speak on this or get some information on the show during citizen participation, because their comments were not germane to the contract that was being let today. If you need more information on that, I know Mark's in the audience, but I think that we were prepared to address it during citizen participation this afternoon. It's your fault.
Oh, so it's going to be covered this afternoon?
Let me get an update from Mark.
This is just information.
Wait, 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 wait. We have to recall the item now, please.
No, I make a motion to resend this, what we had on item forty-seven, and let's just do it again.
Okay, there's a motion to resend. All right.
And my question was just informational.
Wait, 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 we have to read the record, Councilwoman, please.
Okay.
All right, I'll read. Motion carries. Item forty-seven is approval to contract with Standard Insurance for city's basic life slash aid D and D voluntary life and long-term disability plans for self-insurance internal service funding amount of five hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars. Mr. Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. For the record, Mark Vincent, Chief Financial Officer for the City of Las Vegas. Just let me give you a little background on this agenda item. At the advice of Lockton, which is our broker consultant, we decided to bundle together these policies, the basic supplemental life and the LTD, because we felt that doing so would get better pricing, not only for the city, but also for the employees. Lockton contacted fourteen major insurance companies, of which one was Western, who is our current provider for those insurances. Western did not submit a proposal. We only got three proposals for the products that we had bundled together, and we selected Standard, which is the agenda item that you have before you today. And that pricing represents about a hundred thousand dollars a year savings to the City of Las Vegas, but more importantly, about a thirty percent reduction in the insurance rates the employees would have to pay for the supplemental portion. So I understand that Western is in the audience and would like to speak to you. I also have Vicki Robinson, our insurance or benefits manager, as well as Tana Prince, who represents Lockton, who can address any questions you may have. But just for the record, it was a competitive process. Western did not submit a proposal, and they're here today to, I guess, to explain why they didn't or what their issue was.
All right, anybody who wants to speak, pay. I'm putting a three-minute timer. I'm going to enforce it.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Dean Fletcher, President of the Las Vegas Firefighters. The issues I wanted to be brought forward from myself for my members and other employees is there's mention in the background information that has impacts on other plans, and those comments made by the insurance broker, I think, were inappropriate, and we're paying the bill as the employees for some of those offers of insurance. So those comments are included in this background information for this item. So those are future things that are possibly going to be happening. So I think it is germane to mention that, that I disagree with that, those comments regarding our Aflac ability. There's numerous employees that have that coverage, and stopping access to that, I know that probably isn't part of this motion, but it is mentioned in that background information that's on this item. So I wanted to bring that forward.
Thank you.
And also to the Western Insurance Specialist, that has been, it's been quite a number of years, more than ten years, that we've had that access to that life insurance. There are impacts when we start losing access to payroll deduction for Aflac insurance. That's going to have an impact on a lot of employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Mayor, there is a representative of Aflac in the audience. She probably wants to come up and speak, but again, this is --
As I said, I'll listen to anybody who wants to speak, unless I'm putting a three-minute timer on, I'm enforcing it.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Pat Johnson. Excuse me. My name is Pat Johnson. My partner, Amy Bechtel, and an Aflac representative, Mr. Dan Hamer, in the audience. We just became aware of this memo that was attached to the standard proposal, and as a longtime representative and assistant for city benefits, we've been here almost for over nineteen years. We've assisted the city with their enrollment and their voluntary plans all through this time. We're located within the city limits. We are a small minority-owned business, and I have some handouts that I would appreciate if we could deliver to you with the supporting documentation that disputes the memo that's attached to this.
Certainly.
Amy, if you would, please. Some of the issues and concerns, the city has enjoyed what we call A rates with Aflac. They're the lowest rates offered. Everybody's blended together. You get the same offer. Each employee gets the same rate as everybody else. You're not rated up on job description. Fills the gap until the city's long-term disability kicks in. And there are some employees, as Dean Fletcher mentioned, that are not covered by the city's long-term disability, so this is a very, very important benefit for them. All claims are monitored very closely, and we have never had a complaint for evidence of malingering, as is brought out in the memo. The memo is the second portion of that folder, and it is highlighted for you. There are nearly twelve hundred city employees that currently own Aflac policies, one or more of them, and they are the ones that will be impacted. I assume I can only figure that's probably, what, about fifty, sixty percent of all employees here at the city. here at the city. Good portion of the policies are, have been in place many years. They have great building benefit features, so they're accumulating in value. And the benefit and premiums from some of these older plans are irreplaceable. They, you can't find it anywhere else. That's very important. We've kept things as low and affordable for city employees as possible. So, we're asking if the city and the council would please reconsider this benefit for employees to allow the pre-tax benefits on the cancer-intensive care and hospital plans. We discovered in 2009 that city employees saved over $45,000 by having these premiums deducted before their taxes are figured. That's through the Section 125 Cafeteria Plan.
All right, thank you very much. And the record will reflect that the document which you presented us will be made part of the record. All right, very good. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to speak.
Thank you.
When do we begin this process?
Well, we, this is an annual process we go through. We review and recompete usually all of our insured products on an annual basis, on an enrollment calendar year basis. So, this was, the issue here was that we have, I think, three products we're talking about here. We bundled those together. And again, let me...
When you say three products, you just, just, just back up just for a second, and just slow down for a minute. Walk me through the three products and how those products benefit the city of Las Vegas and its employees.
The city offers a basic life insurance that the city pays. It's different levels of coverage. It's a basic term life insurance. It's rated based on your age, and we price that annually with our insurance carrier. We also offer a supplemental policy, which the employee pays 100 percent out of their pocket. And then we also offer an LTD plan for disability, injury, that there's illness that prevents an employee from working. I just want to be clear that the Aflac plan has nothing to do with this agenda item on today. It's a separate issue that I can't address, if you'd like.
You say can or cannot?
I can't address, if you'd like. It's a separate issue.
Okay.
Excuse me, let me get, let me get an opinion from our attorney. Is this, we have an attorney?
We don't have an attorney, so we can do what we want to, Mayor.
All right.
Go ahead, Mark. Our attorney is sitting in the audience.
Go ahead, go for it. Go for it, Councilman.
Go ahead, Mark.
I'm sorry.
Well, we don't have an attorney, so I'll represent the city today. I'm kidding. Go ahead.
Well, with respect to the first issue, and Mr. Mayor, I may have, as a result of the vote earlier, just to clarify, I think I told the Western folks to come back at public comment, and that's why they're no longer in the audience.
All right, I'll do it then.
From my perspective, they, we bundled this product together. We used to bid them separately, these products separately. We bundled them together because of the advice of Lockton, they thought we would get better pricing, and in fact, we did. As I mentioned before, we saved quite a bit of money for the city, as well as for the employees. When we bundled them together, Western was no longer interested in bidding on that particular request or requirement that we advertised. I don't want to speak for them, but my guess is they would have rather bid on a different product or a different situation that we did not, were not interested in. And that's what they really want to talk to you about today, is that maybe they had some other product that we should have considered, but that's not what we advertised, that's not what we competed. They didn't submit a bid. As far as I'm concerned, they really had no standing.
And if I could inject, I think the discussion up until this point to explain the backup material and some of the things in it has been appropriate, but I think to put one more toe over the line, we're going to be over the edge on the open meeting law. Our only agenda to vote on the item that's before us today on item 47.
My second suggestion would be with respect to the Aflac issue, that we could probably talk about that at public comment, if you want, or address it in some other fashion. It's up to you.
My next question, then, is as we bring forward this item here before council today, are you calling this a bundling package?
Yeah, we decided to bundle those three policies together, those three plans together, and compete them as a bundle, because we thought we would get better pricing, and we did.
And we did?
And we did.
Okay, and so you vetted all other opportunities, such as those who have come before us here today, taken them into consideration in the bundling, and came up with the best package before the council?
That's what we believe, staff believes, and I believe that we've done the best we could with that particular product. But again, it's unrelated to this other issue with Aflac.
Okay, and I can appreciate that, and understand that. Is there a rush to move this forward? Or what is the timing as to why this has come before the council today versus allowing us a little bit more time to work out some of the wrinkles possibly that exist?
The issue is there's an annual enrollment cycle, and so we're in the process of selecting all of our carriers for the annual enrollment process, which is on a calendar year basis. So, yeah, there's a...
And what is that calendar year?
Effective January 1st. So, we have to, in order to do open enrollment, we're required to get out the open enrollment information to employees so they can make certain selections. And so, we have to know who those carriers are, what those rates are going to be, so we can inform the employees so they can make a choice that will be effective the first of the year.
Yeah, we've got to be careful. The open meeting law is really an issue here.
Also, Mayor, just for Beverly, my system has just gone down as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay, did you, did you want to be heard? Three-minute timer again. Please speak to the issue and not beyond it, because we're on very dangerous ground here on the open meeting law with these comments being made.
Good morning. I will make my comments brief. My name is Dan Himey. I'm the Estate Sales Coordinator for Aflac. And really, when we take a look at this, we just became informed this past week that Aflac, that there's a possibility that we might not be part of the open enrollment for upcoming plan year 2011. Simply put, I want to address what the second item that is before you, and that is the evaluation of the city offering voluntary benefits through Aflac to their employees. Some of the language that is stated here is quite inflammatory, and I think we provided for you the documentation from Aflac indicating that Aflac is indeed a good value. As it pertains to the bundling part, the bundling really deals with the LTD and some of these other areas, but this memo addresses, of course, Aflac as a supplemental insurance, and that is completely separate. We've been a benefit for city employees since the 1970s. The vast majority of our policies have been in place for many, many years. Your employees have insured through Aflac guaranteed renewable rate fix and portable benefits, and they themselves are paying at 100 percent of the premium. So, this has done at absolutely no cost to the city. The city's process is simply to take the payroll deduction and remit it electronically to Aflac. We, through bridge benefits, handle the rest of both the enrollment process as well as the servicing of these policies.
Thank you very much.
Just one final comment. We are not stopping any of these programs. We're not stopping access to the employees. All we're doing is because we are neither sponsoring nor endorsing these programs, and sometimes through payroll deduction, it looks like we are endorsing them, and we are not. But we are making them available. We have no intention to stop the access to employees. Whether or not that affects their pricing of the products with the enrollment, that's up to them. So, we're not stopping the products. We're not stopping the access. We're merely making an administrative decision that for those supplemental plans that the city has neither a sponsor nor an endorse, endorse of, there are many other ways to arrange for electronic payment or billing, direct billing. There's, we're not stopping access. So, it's not like we're not providing support to these products, these insurance companies.
Councilwoman Wilson, if you may.
Yes, just quickly. Mark, did you say that the process went out as an RFP?
Yeah, we use, for insurance products, we go, we use our broker, Lockton, to help us with that process, because they are experts in the insurance area. And so, they help define, help us define what those requirements were. They make suggestions to us, such as if you bundle these products, maybe you would get better pricing. And so, they, so yes, it was a competitive process that was managed through our broker.
It was a public process. So, the companies that are coming forward now and providing input to the city had an opportunity to participate in that process, bid on the bundled package if they wished to or not. It's not like we did this one-on-one with some new company.
That's correct.
And then, secondly, when we decide what company to contract with, we don't merely look at what is the cheapest product, do we? Because quality of service and quality of the product is important, too. I mean, let's take car insurance. You can buy liability insurance for pennies compared to dollars of other companies, but when you get into an accident, you call that company up, you don't get very good service. So, we also considered the quality of the product and the service itself, not just its price.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else like to be heard?
Well, I want to say I'm glad you acknowledged in the open meeting laws, to be very careful, Lee. And you're pretty good at kind of going around it. See you later.
Okay, anybody else want to be heard?
You're all right, move to follow, Staff, I'll raise for proof of side of please.
Thank you, let's vote, please. Motion. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 58, this report regarding the progress of the design and creation of a world-class veterans memorial to be constructed at Huntred Circle Park, located at Maryland Parkway and Charleston Boulevard in Ward 3. Mr. Olivas.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Ted Olivas, Director of Administrative Services. As the item indicates, this is an update on the progress of the Veterans Memorial project at Huntred Circle Park. Bill Marion, who is representative of the Las Vegas Veterans Memorial Foundation and other city of Las Vegas things that we have going here, is going to provide a short PowerPoint presentation on the project.
Thank you, Ted, Mayor, members of the council. Standing with me are the founders of the Las Vegas Veterans Memorial, Mike Mallett and Mick Catron. And we came before you about two months ago and gave you a report and update on the four finalists that had been selected based on their concept and design. And so, today, we are before you to show you the artist that has been selected, and we're very, very proud of this. As you know, the memorial will be at Huntred Circle Park. It's a salute to our countries and to our veterans. We had four finalists, and those four were from around the country. You saw their maquettes. And our finalists today, and this was approved by the selection committee and then submitted to the Las Vegas Arts Commission, and we thank them for all of their help in this process. And they then approved the selection unanimously. The selected artist is Dow Blumberg. Dow Blumberg, from the USC Idlewild School of the Arts and Music, has over 200 private and public commissions. He designed the U.S. Army Special Forces Monument, the New Jersey Fallen Soldiers Monument, and he was a finalist for the Ground Zero Project commemorating 911 in New York. He, this is some examples of his previous work, the Evolution of Flight in Longmont, Colorado, the Memorial to the Comer Flight 5191, which crashed in Lexington, Kentucky, and Music in the Air in Lebanon, Kentucky. His product, or his design, has haunting sculptures that are designed in stainless steel, representing American military involvement in every American conflict. A Center Paris bronze modern vignette with a family group that looks on, and so it portrays both how war impacts not only veterans, but it impacts families as well. And then granite memorial walls with narrative quotations. And in Dow's own words, "The American veteran's experience remains fundamentally unchanged from Bunker Hill to Fallujah. Their dedication and sacrifice shared by their loved ones form the very pages upon which our country's history has and will be written. Love of country, family, honor, and the brotherhood of arms are the passionate codes binding together all generations of soldiers together through time. The dual overarching themes of this monument are the continuity of dedication and sacrifice through time, and the debt of gratitude owed to all generations of American veterans and their families." So, we present to you the concept design by Dow Blumberg. And I would turn it over to my colleagues if they have any comments they'd like to make.
First of all, we'd like to thank the city...
Just identify yourself for the record.
Yes, sir. Michael Mallett, Director of Las Vegas Veterans Memorial Foundation. First of all, we'd like to thank the City Council, City of Las Vegas, for their support in this project. And second, we'd like to thank the veterans and their families that make it possible for us to be here to complete this. We very much look forward to the support of the community moving forward and to completing the memorial.
When will it be completed?
Mick Catron, also Director of Las Vegas Veterans Memorial. Right now, we don't have a specific timeline, due to the fact that we just finally selected one artist. So, now we're going to go through the finalization process with the final design that's going to be put into the park. Once we establish what that final design is, then we'll have to go back to the artist and start sourcing materials, timeline, and put it together for the different components of this and build the timeline out.
Well, I sure hope that, I'm not going to be unrealistic and say that it's going to be completed by this Veterans Day, but certainly, it's our expectation and our desire that this be up and running and have all the significance that's been imparted by way of Mr. Blumberg's expressions by Veterans Day next year.
We hope so as well, Mayor.
Really, I think we really have to shoot for that. Thank you. That's a...
And Mayor, with those comments, and gentlemen, you thanked the veterans. You two are veterans as well, and I think we owe debt of gratitude to you as well for serving this country. But if you don't mind me asking, how are you paying for this? How's this getting paid for? Because I think it's important that everybody understands that concept.
This is being paid for through private donations. So, there will be corporate sponsorships, individuals will be able to contribute. There will be opportunities for families to put a memorial in for their own family members who have served in conflict or have served in the armed forces. So, there will be no public funds spent on the design or the construction of the memorial.
And that's significant, Mayor, that everybody understands that, because if they want to help contribute to this, and I got to tell you, I'm a little jealous, because Mayor Protem is a lucky man to have this in his ward, because I'd like to see it out in the Northwest. But this is an awesome opportunity to highlight the conflict we've been in and to certainly say thank you to the men and women who've served this country, and many of them with their lives. So, I appreciate all that you guys are doing. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. And you know, several months ago, we started recognizing members of the U.S. military personnel with ties to Nevada who've lost their lives overseas. And I was waiting for this item to be called, because unfortunately, I'm saddened to announce that on September the 21st, we lost Senior Airman Michael J. Burris, a wound suffered during an improvised explosive device detonation in Kandahar, Afghanistan. He was assigned to the 99th Civil Engineers Squadron Explosive Ordinance Disposal Team from Nellis Air Force Base and was a Purple Heart recipient from a previous deployment. And our hearts and our prayers go out to his family, and I think it's with him in mind and those who preceded him, that this park is being built and dedicated so that there'll be a living memorial to all those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. So, that's why it's important to get it done. And that's why, Bill, I think it's critical that you go out and raise the money from the private sector. I can't think of anything during this time that sends a better message as to how we care about those who have put their lives at risk in order to protect our freedoms and our rights.
Mayor, thank you very much, and I want to thank you for your support in this endeavor. Mayor Protem Reese, we could not have been gone this far without all of the help that you've given us, and to the rest of the council as well. It's been a real joy working with you as we move forward with this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
Mr. Marion, I really appreciate those kind words, but I got to tell you, we got two guys right here, and yourself. The amount of time you've spent even getting to where we're at today, to me, is just awesome. I continually get fooled, it seems like each and every day, by the work you guys accomplish. I mean, you two guys are probably two of the greatest veterans we've ever had, as far as I'm concerned, because of your desire to do what you're doing. And to see the work and the problems that you faced, it hasn't been easy. There's been a lot of people out there that have tried to derail this for whatever reasons. But this is, it's going to be one of the nicest things that we've gotten in the city of Las Vegas. It is going to be a tourist destination for people to go to. If it's just to spend 15 minutes or 15 seconds remembering, it's important. And it is time the city of Las Vegas has something like this in our midst, so that people can use it. And we wouldn't have it if it wasn't for you guys.
So, get it done, fellas. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item 59, this report and possible action regarding the 2012 federal legislative agenda. Mr. Olivas?
Mayor?
Yes.
And I promise...
Yes.
And I promised Mr. Graham I wouldn't ask no questions today.
All right.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Ted Olivas, Director of Administrative Services. I'm joined today by Vicky Cram, our lobbyist in Washington, who is with firm Ball Janik. We are here to talk to you today about the development of our federal plan for next year, and also to provide a brief update on what's going on in Washington. As you know, each year, we seek the input from the mayor and council, from the city manager's office, and each director in putting together our federal plan. This is the federal plan that we send out each year. What we do is, we talk to each of you to identify potential appropriations requests and to identify any changes that may be required of the plan. We want to make sure that we're hitting the most current events. The plan, as you know, includes our appropriation priorities, legislative issues, a section on public lands, and our priorities thereof, and other legislative topics of interest to the city. This document, as you know, is used by me and my staff and Vicky in our lobbying efforts on behalf of the city in Washington. We will be bringing the two thousand and eleven plan back either in late December or early January for your approval for next year. And so, we'll be incorporating all that we receive from the departments. And I, of course, will keep you updated between now and then on the progress of the plan. With that, I'll turn it over to Vicky for a short update.
Ms. Graham?
Good morning. I'm Vicky Cram, Director of Government Relations with Ball Janik LLP. And it's a pleasure to be here this morning. As you know, I work, and as Ted mentioned, I work for you and for the citizens of Las Vegas in Washington, D.C. As such, I work with you, the mayor, the mayor Protem, and the city council, and your excellent city staff to develop the federal agenda every year, as Ted just showed you. And it's tailored as advocacy to the needs of the city and to mesh with the direction that the administration and Congress is going to be taking in the coming year. It's our blueprint for the year. On a day-to-day basis, I work with our congressional delegation, their staff, congressional committees, and those in key administration positions on a variety of topics that affect the city. For example, I fill out the paperwork for our congressionally-directed spending and appropriations process, and our surface transportation authorization requests. I draft letters of support for issues like D-Block Public Safety Communications legislation, or register our suggested changes to floor amendments concerning the False Claims Act, or keep the delegation informed of our timely and complete obligation of our neighborhood stabilization funds. This congressional session has been a time of contradictions and controversies in Congress. There was passage of large, complex legislation such as the Recovery Bill, healthcare, financial services reform, Cash for Clunkers, Credit Card Holder Bill of Rights, and right before Congress adjourned, the Small Business Jobs Act. But left undone were bread and butter issues like passage of the twelve appropriations bills, energy reform, transportation authorization, and federal aviation authorization. Over the past year, the city has been engaged in a number of issues. One is our congressionally-directed spending. City had seven requests that we submitted to the delegation early in the year. The appropriations process is not yet complete. We're operating on a continuing resolution until December third. So, this is a little bit of a snapshot in time, yet to be decided, yet to be determined what the final outcome is. But the city has secured two-point-two-five million in congressionally-directed spending that comes directly to the city of Las Vegas. Five hundred thousand for sustainable neighborhood pilot plan, pilot program, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for bus turnouts, and a million dollars for senior housing. Plus, in addition, we reprogrammed, which had to occur legislatively, one-point-three-six million from previous year's fundings that, for a variety of reasons, could not be spent and otherwise would have been lost, for a total of three-point-five million dollars that come directly to the city of Las Vegas. The congressional delegation was supportive of these funding needs, and Senator Reed, in particular, was key in securing some of these funds. We've been working closely also on the public lands issue with our local partners, the delegation, congressional delegation, on the potential for monument legislation in the upper Wash. We've also been working closely with the Bureau of Land Management to provide input on the supplemental environmental impact statement and the conservation transfer area. We are working towards a national monument legislation that would create the best outcome for the city, which includes allowing the city preserving the Wash and also allowing the city the ability to grow. In the coming year, we will continue to work on issues of interest to the city such as the surface transportation bill, our Katrina-like foreclosure crisis, job creation, and economic development. The direction of the next Congress, of course, is dependent on the results of the next election. As you know, Congress will return in November for lame-duck session, and will try to wrap up unfinished business for the year. What can't be dealt with in the lame-duck session might get punted into the next Congress, for example, the appropriations bills. I will appear before you again with the new legislative agenda in a couple of months. The election results will have been integrated into our approach and our agenda, and we will be poised to continue working aggressively on your behalf in the coming year with our hard-working congressional delegation. As always, it's an honor to appear before you and to join you in your work for this great city.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Are there any questions, Ms. Graham? Any comments? All right, this time they have a motion, please. Counsel Wilson?
Would be to accept the report and to thank Vicky for always a good job.
Very good, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. It should be noted that we're not sitting up here like a bunch of potted plants. We have been briefed and been rebriefed and have met with Ms. Graham. I met with her back in Washington, D.C. about ten days ago, and she was up at the office either yesterday or the day before, and certainly going over all of the items that she was talking about today with a broad brush and very explicit detail. So, I don't want the reflection of our not questioning her to be anything other than what it is. Okay, we'll have item sixty-one, which is discussion and possible action regarding the ratification of John Michael Myers as Director of Fire and Rescue. Chief Myers, why don't you come up here? Mrs. Fretwell?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. You know, a few weeks ago, we found out that Chief Gammon had decided to retire and leave the city service. He had an extraordinarily exciting opportunity to join the Community College of Southern Nevada to lead up their emergency services department and suite of classes that are provided through that. And it just was a fantastic opportunity for Greg. Simultaneously created a big hole for the city of Las Vegas in one of our most critical service areas. So, we will miss Greg greatly, but it's my honor and pleasure to request your support for the ratification of Mike Myers as the new chief of Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. As many of you know, Mike has been an employee of the Fire and Rescue Department since nineteen eighty-six, and he's held various positions along the way, ranging from firefighter up to, most recently, Deputy Chief over medical services. He also acted as the interim fire chief when we went through the last chief search process about three years ago for close to four months. Mike has been a leader in the emergency medical field for many years, designing, implementing, and leading the transport program, cardiac arrest survivability, patient care reporting, regional EMS, and hospital integrated communication systems, communication center response time reductions, and the Metropolitan Medical Response System for the Valley, to name a few. Mike is currently pursuing a healthcare administration bachelor's degree program and intends to complete that degree expeditiously while he serves as chief. While all the members of the executive team are absolutely excellent, I mean, my hat is off to Greg for building such a great bench. I feel that Deputy Chief Myers has the extra experience and talents that we need to be successful. Anyone who's ever worked with Mike knows that he's professional, bright, and extremely talented as a leader at fire and rescue. I also greatly respect his passion for the fire service and all that it entails. Deputy Chief Myers is regarded as a true expert by his peers across the country, and I have every confidence that he will represent the department and the city well in this critically important role. So, I appreciate your support for his ratification today. Thank you.
Chief Myers, I think that because this is a very special occasion, that you should ask your family to join you at the podium while remarks are being made and motions are being made and votes being taken. If they'd be kind enough to come out, would you please introduce them to us?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm Mike Myers, Deputy Chief of Las Vegas Fire Rescue. This is my wonderful family, my wife Lori, my twelve-year-old son Sean, and my daughter Taylor. I have another daughter that should be watching from Utica, New York, live on the internet, and that's Megan.
Terrific. Would you like to say anything before we open it up for council comment?
You know, Mayor, I would, and certainly after the vote, if it's positive, there's some thank yous I'd like to make. But of course, I'm deeply honored to be here in front of you today. I want to make sure the council knows, the citizens, the visitors of Las Vegas, that you have my commitment as fire chief to lead this organization with the utmost professionalism, an act of demonstration, a fiscal responsibility, and the bravery you would expect from your fire chief. To the men and women of Las Vegas Fire Rescue, you have my commitment to build an organization of innovation and creativity, to build environments where you can succeed, and to continuously strive to deliver best practices in every area we provide services. You are the best firefighting force a leader can ask to lead. I've met with each and every one of you. We've talked about who I am, what I'm about, what the expectations you have of me as your fire chief. I've told each and every one of you that I'm ready, and I'm ready to lead this fire department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions, Mayor Protem?
Just a couple of comments. I told, Ms. Fretwell, when she talked to me about this, I said, "Well, you're talking to the wrong person," because I'm prejudiced. When I was first elected, the mayor had me go down to Alabama to a week's training. I think there was probably between three-hundred-and-fifty and four-hundred other employees and representatives from the community representing a disaster. And we went down there and I found out I was only elected official there. And Mr. Myers kind of took me under his wing, I guess, and tried to teach me really quickly in our emergency manual what I needed to know as somebody that may have to be in charge of a disaster, what's going on, and even afterwards. And it was quite substantial for me to realize just what kind of position I was in if we did have a disaster. And we had a couple mocks, and the chief was always right there with me. And I always appreciated that because the mayor told me, because he'd went the week before, I think back to New York-
Emmitsburg.
Emmitsburg. And it was kind of the same type of training. And, you know, it's something to have somebody there that you know and that you can trust. And I'm sure that as I'm sitting here before you today, that this man can help us get through these trying times that we're going through. And it's not going to be easy, and I told him that when I talked to him. I said, "Why would you want this job at this time?" And he said, "Because I think the time is right for me." And I thought, "Well, if he wants to do it, then God bless him." Because I do, I can support it, and I can support him. And I know Mr. Gammon has done a fantastic job for us, and, you know, Chief Washington has since I've been here. We've had a lot of people that wanted to do this. And I appreciate you stepping forward and accepting this, and I know you will, you will do what you have to do to help us.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mayor.
We'll have Counsel Wilson and Counsel Ross.
Thank you. Congratulations, chief. I'm confident the vote will be unanimous. It's a sad day and a happy day. It's a sad day because a few weeks ago, we learned that Chief Gammon was going to retire and move on to greater opportunities. And Chief Gammon, you've been the best of the best, and we're sad to lose you. Although, I think we're going to have two chiefs for a couple, three months, maybe, during this transition time. But it's also a very happy day and a great day. And I was impressed with you, Mike, when you came and sat in my office a couple of days ago. I was impressed with the degree of excitement. You know, we want people that want the job. We don't want people that, "Well, it's just the natural thing to do, and I guess I'm next." That's not the attitude we want. We want people that want the job and that are excited about the job. And that's what I saw in you, Mike. And to echo what Mayor Protem Reese said, these are the toughest of times. I mean, Chief Gammon, the last couple, three years, has probably spent most of his waking hours thinking about money and budget, and that's not going away. These next couple, three, four years, we're going to be right in the thick of things because of our budget concerns. But in my opinion, the most important thing is to focus on the quality of service to provide to our constituents. Because nothing else matters if we're not providing the best fire protection, fire suppression, and emergency medical services to the citizens of this city. And I'm confident you're the man for the job. Congratulations to your family. When I look at the faces of your children, now, you really have a lot to be proud of, because this is a great day for your father. So, congratulations to all of you.
Counsel Russ?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you talked about the bench that Chief Gammon has built. And Chief Myers, I just want to point out, that bench is sitting right there, and all of you men are fully qualified and capable of doing this. And I want you all to recognize that from my point of view. But these men support you in this position. Chief Gammon, we, the city of Las Vegas, owes you and your family, because your father was on this fire department as well. And I think that's significant because you've dedicated your life and your career to the residents of this city. And I want you to know how much I personally appreciate that and wish you the best in your endeavors. And I still need coaching on golf, so I just want to point that out, too. Chief Myers, I want to talk to your wife if I can. Lori, are you ready?
Okay.
Lori, you and I have known each other since we were kids, pretty much. Are you ready for this?
I think so.
You support your husband in this position?
Absolutely.
I think that's significant as well. And Chief Myers, I did that on purpose because, you know, I want you to stay married, and that's an important thing.
Yes, it is, thank you.
Because this is a tough calling. This is a challenging time, as the mayor's pointed out, and Councilman Wolfson as well. This isn't an easy task. And Betsy, I know this was not an easy decision. You and I have had many discussions about this as well. And again, Chief Gammon and the rest of your chiefs, thank you for all that you do for this city and for this department. I'm proud to serve with you, Chief Gammon, looking forward to serving with you, Chief Myers.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Wilson?
I needed to ask a couple of questions. Usually, we have an effective date. What is the effective date of this appointment?
January seventh.
January seventh, so we don't have two fire chiefs at the same time, but they're working together. I got that. So, this is January seventh, and then I wanted to strongly clarify that I feel Mike Myers is an excellent candidate for fire chief, and I support his obtaining that position. I really respect you, Mike, and I've heard many wonderful things about you. I feel the city is fortunate to have you and others within our fire program that are so well-qualified. And I know you will make an outstanding fire chief. I support you, and I concur with the previous comments of my fellow councilmen. I do, however, want to voice a concern with the process of selection, which is totally unrelated to you. And I don't want it to get them tangled because it's unrelated to you. It is, however, very important as far as transparency and purity of selection is concerned. I believe quite strongly that qualifications for candidates should not be changed after the process for selection begins, after someone has resigned and then we're starting another search. I think that's extremely important because when that occurs, you give an impression that the integrity of the process is compromised. And I think it's very important that we, as members of a city council, make sure that that impression is never given as far as anybody. And I know that doesn't concern you, it concerns me because I just feel a strong responsibility up here. And I also want to congratulate you in your new position and want you to know that my feelings in that respect are not related to you or your abilities, but they are related to what we need to follow as councilpeople. And I know that I will not vote ever again on any issue if the, or any person, if the qualifications are changed after the process begins. Thank you.
Anybody else at this time?
Mayor Ginn?
Yes, Counsel Wilson.
Thank you. I also would like to echo the councilwoman's comments as well without going into detail. We've had those conversations. And I do support Chief Myers for your leadership prior to this vote that's about to take place today. So, in advance, good luck to you. Congratulations to you and your family, because this is most definitely going to be a family affair, because sitting in the top seat is not as easy as being behind the scenes. And I know that from- I know that from experience myself having been on staff prior to coming into the city on the dais now. So we will have an opportunity to continue to grow and work together and get to know each other a little bit better. So for that, Mayor, I would like for us to move forward and allow these votes to drop so that this young man can get to work.
Okay, well, I've got a comment that I have to make before we hear from you. I was a hundred percent behind you, but having just been given some information, I'm beginning to waver on the confidence that I had in Chief Myers becoming the director of Fire Rescue.
This is not true.
No, stick around.
This is part of the training.
Wait a second. Wait a second. All I can tell you is, Chief Gammon, stick around because we may need you. I've been advised that Chief Myers is going to jump off the top of the stratosphere with Councilman Ross in support of fundraising efforts for the Boy Scouts. That makes me question your mental stability.
The way I understood it, I was pushing Councilman Ross. I wasn't jumping.
That's fair that.
You're going to have to.
Chief, you go on your mission, and I'm a hundred percent behind you again.
If he goes first, then we'll see.
Okay. But I have a motion, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Again, I take great privilege in making this motion today to, for Mike Myers to be our new fire chief. I know he's going to do a great job, and you do have one more supporter out there, too, Chief, that just come in. I think it's Charlie Smith. Anyhow, you do have a lot of support, and I want to thank the members over here that are here today showing their support to you. It means a lot to us to be able to sit up here and make these easy decisions when we have all these tough decisions to make sometimes. This is an easy decision for me today to nominate you and bring your name forward to be our new fire chief.
All right, let's go to that, please. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mayor Protem, councilmembers, fellow members of Team Las Vegas, the executive staff and fire personnel of Las Vegas Fire Rescue, my family and friends. Again, I'm deeply honored. I am tremendously excited and at the same time, very aware, very aware of the serious nature of the responsibilities I assume today. I feel above all, very grateful to all those who have supported me in this endeavor dating back to when I first started as a firefighter twenty-four years ago at the age of nineteen. I specifically would like to thank Chief Greg Gammon for his leadership and his confidence in me, and the executive staff of Las Vegas Fire Rescue for their dedication and commitment to make us the best firefighting service in the country. I also want to express my sincerest appreciation to City Manager Betsy Fretwell and Deputy City Manager Jim Nichols for believing in me enough to pick me for this important post. I would like to thank my wife for her continuous support, my children for the sacrifices they make as I seek greater and greater challenges, my mother and father who are watching from Texas on the Internet. Thank you for believing in me, Mom and Dad. Again, I am deeply honored and find this an extraordinary privilege to be your fire chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. The clerk's office has made a request for a five-minute recess. We'll be in recess for five minutes. That was funny. You came back pretty good.
No, you've already been up and down. It's all the new computers haven't been up since they did the updates. No, you've already been up and down. It's all the new computers haven't been up since they did the updates. The mayor? Fire Services? Yeah. Sorry. Sorry. You know, very difficult to push. We got, you know, we laid off about two hundred people last year. We only made six hundred. Yeah, yeah. Bottom line is, it's been a solid day. It's been better since. Same money, which same time.
It's a job everybody does. I like chicken on when they all get here. Really, thanks, man.
Okay, just tell me one.
Mike, I want to say congratulations. You know my wife, she's right. Even though we're good old folks, we're not. Now, my son is the guy from Senior. Okay, good. Good. Because I saw you, I was going to talk to you. Oh, yeah, but you're taking. Yeah, yeah. That's the town. Yeah, yeah. Good, I'm excited. You just have a good talk.
He's got a great smile.
Yes, Orlando. Well, I have a county mayor in five minutes later. And I'm one of the oldest. The company is in town. I'm in Las Vegas. I thought it started this coming in the morning. Yeah, we need to begin on September certain time. I remember the sixth, the same year as now. We're here. Man, that's the future, man. Yes, we do, and you're going to holler.
I hollered a couple times, and it just didn't work out. We'll do it again.
You guys have a break now?
Two minutes here, yeah. If you're getting ready, get started.
Well, this way. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll be there. Just wear that train, man.
What is that?
I'm going to be, I've taken your audit, and I went over there and just meet with Red right now.
It's very serious business.
Uh-huh.
It's very serious business.
Oh, I know, I know. I'm honored.
It's about as important, a non-elected position as it is.
I know. Thank you.
No?
Thank you.
Just do a good job.
I know. Yeah, I'll see you later.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh, I'm just gonna show, okay. Oh, boy, for an easy meeting. I can't say it.
Huh? Here, Ricky, another one. Twenty years, Park County Bar Association. We're not going to have a lot of the judges there and stuff and smoking house for the Park County Bar and State Bar, so.
Tomorrow.
It's a, it'll be drinking bar and attorney bar, okay?
Yeah, because I already got this out. Yeah, so I'm dated, so I have to. So.
Yeah. I can't say it. Cut your face. Huh? Here, Ricky, another one. Twenty years, Park County Bar Association. We're not going to have a lot of the judges there and stuff and smoking house for the Park County Bar and State Bar, so.
Tomorrow.
It's a, it'll be drinking bar and attorney bar, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, because I already got this out. Yeah, so I'm dated, so I have to. So. Yeah. 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 So. Yeah.
All right, folks, if you'd be kind enough to take your seats, we're going to resume our meeting. I'm advised that the computers are now in fine shape. Okay, we'll wait for the other council members to please join us up here. Okay. Orlando, were you able to find her? Okay, maybe we'll get her back before the end of the day, I'd like to do something, thank you. All right, item sixty-two, discussion and possible action regarding funding legal fees of Lewis and Roca to represent the city of Las Vegas in two Supreme Court appeals involving similar eminent domain matters pertaining to patent deed easement, land restrictions for parcels owned by Cliff Shadows Professional Plaza LLC and Blue Waters Family Limited Partnership for the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, and these properties are in Ward Four. Mr. Jervick?
Thank you, Your Honor, this is an order and we recommend approval.
All right, are there any comments or questions of Mr. Jervick? All right, now the motion, please. Councilman Anthony?
A motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you, let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries, thank you. Item sixty-three is hearing discussion and possible action regarding complaint seeking disciplinary action against James Cooper doing business as the Amazing Art Company at thirty-eight fourteen Meadows Lane, Las Vegas, Park County, Nevada, for violations of the Las Vegas Municipal Code, and this is in Ward One. Mr. Byrne?
Morning, Your Honor, I believe Mr. Cooper's here.
Mr. Cooper, why don't you come up?
Hello, good morning.
Good morning. And Mr. Byrne?
Morning, Your Honor, I think before we begin the hearing, I spoke to Mr. Cooper last night, and he wants a request to continuance, I don't believe it's allowed under the code, but I would like to give him the opportunity.
All right, fine, the record should reflect that I'm going to make this a part of the record that I received just momentarily ago, a to whom it may concern request for a continuance in order for the gentleman to seek legal counsel, and I'll make that part of the record. Uh, clerk? Cooper? You want to be heard on that issue?
Um, yes, Your Honor, I spoke to, uh, um, an attorney and they requested a thirty-five-hundred-dollar retainer to represent me today, and I was only able to raise twenty-five-hundred dollars. Um, I'm a thousand dollars short of having the money to have legal representation here with me, and, um, I understand from speaking to, um...
Mr. Byrne?
The attorney yesterday, yeah, that, um, the next city council hearing is on the twentieth, and, um, that that would be sixty-three days since the complaint had been filed, which is three days over the limit, and I would like to ask if I could have a continuance until the twentieth, um, because I will be able to have an attorney if it is continued until, until the next city council hearing.
All right, what is your position, Mr. Byrne?
Your Honor, the, uh, the ordinance is mandatory in this case, the hearing can't be more than sixty days after the approval of the complaint, that would be past the time, one little while by the ordinance.
Let me ask you this, uh, can they, uh, according to wave, uh, the, uh...
No, Your Honor.
Sixty-day requirement?
We, we have looked this up in the past and it is jurisdictional. Uh, the only way for a continuance to be granted in this case would be for the council to have a special meeting within that sixty-day timeframe. If we go over it, and this gentleman were to get different counsel on appeal, he might argue ineffective assistance of counsel, he might argue the jurisdictional aspect of it, it would then possibly be reversed by the district court, and we'd have to restart the complaint process. So the only way to, to do this is to, one, hear it today, two, have a special meeting within the sixty days, or, three, have us restart the complaint process.
All right, well, the, uh, complaint was served upon you on August the twenty-sixth, so, uh, I, I think there was probably adequate time for you to retain counsel, and based on the jurisdictional aspect of this, whether I agree with it or not, that appears to be the case as our council tells us, and we'll go forward today. All right, Mr. Byrne?
Yes, Your Honor. Before we get into the hearing, I have a set of exhibits I'd like to give to the clerk and have introduced some evidence.
Maybe the others agree with you. I don't have a problem. Uh, I mean, Councilperson Wilson would like to be heard on this.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Jervick. I understand what you said about jurisdictional, could you tell us again? Because in most every situations involving court hearings, whether it be a criminal trial, a civil trial, administrative process, there's always room that if somebody comes in and needs a continuance, especially this is his first request, that there should be some flexibility where we grant him a request for a continuance. But let, let's say he came in and said he's ill, he doesn't feel good, he's got the flu, or something like that. Under what you're advising us, we couldn't give him a continuance, and he's not asking for three or four months, he's asking for basically thirty days, which puts us three days over the sixty-day rule. So I guess my question is, is there any room for a little flexibility under these circumstances?
Unfortunately, the flexibility, uh, it comes into the fact that it's your code and you can change it. Um, but the way it is written right now, there is no flexibility. We'll be more than happy to entertain an amendment if you want to change it in the future. Uh, we've discussed it with council members in the past, I don't know if you were on the council the last time this came up, but it's been an issue now for many, many years since we've been doing these disciplinary complaints. Uh, again, since it's your code, it can be adjusted, but because it hasn't been adjusted, because of the way the language is phrased, there just isn't any wiggle room here, other than have the hearing.
Certainly, we couldn't adjust the code now.
That's correct.
Okay, my next question would be, is what would be the ramifications if this council were to decide to give him his request for continuance, and the new date put us at that sixty-third day? Give me a scenario, we come back in, in, uh, on the date in question, which is three days past the sixty days, we have a hearing, uh, he wins. Could we appeal because we violated the jurisdictional rule? Or scenario number two, he loses? What are the, the potential scenarios?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I would urge this, though, so that we don't get into the uncertain. If there's a desire to give the gentleman a continuance, there is a method to do that, and that is just to simply allow this date to expire today, and we'll refile the complaint at the next council meeting, starting a whole new sixty-day cycle. That'll give him plenty of time to get an attorney.
Okay, so there are...
There are methods, there's a method to do it.
Yeah, but, well, I appreciate that, but I'm gonna let the ruling stand, because if that's the way to do it, we, we have a, a history here, and, uh, I, I think that that would be putting us in a bad position, to be quite frank. I believe in the man's intent of the council, but I think that he certainly had enough time to retain somebody, so we're going to go forward.
And if I could put on the record too, Your Honor, and I, I know that as a philosophical matter, we may disagree, but as a legal matter, there is no right to legal counsel at these hearings.
No, and I understand that, but if he wants a lawyer ordinarily, my tendency would be get a lawyer, and we'd be happy to hear from the lawyer, and he said he doesn't know what the rules are in the motion that he filed or the request he filed, and I hate to see a person having a, a property right, whatever it is, as far as a license is concerned, and not to have adequate representation, but under the circumstances and the, the history here, I feel that we should go forward today, and I'm not prepared to put her off for another sixty days.
Um, may, may I say something?
Sure.
Um, I would sign, like, if you guys could print up something, I would sign something that say, I, you know, if it went through sixty-three days, that I wouldn't, you know...
I appreciate that, and ordinarily, under perhaps another set of circumstances, I would be, uh, prone to allow you to do that, but there are too many, uh, too many issues here of jurisdictional nature, so we're, we're gonna go forward.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes?
Uh, to council, when, when was the gentleman notified? What was the date in which he was notified that he would be coming before?
August twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth.
So it was August twenty-sixth.
Correct.
Today's October...
Six.
Six. Okay, um...
And it was, and, and then it was just, I, you know, I tried to raise as much money as I could, and I, I raised twenty-five-hundred dollars, but it was thirty-five-hundred dollars to have an attorney respond. So I'm only a thousand dollars short, and then if the next city council is indeed on the twentieth, that's only a fourteen-day continuance from today.
But, but understanding what, uh, our council was sharing with us, we're pretty much, um, caught with that back up against the wall right now, as far as making a decision as to whether or not we set a precedent. Um, and Mayor and council, I'm, I'm not, um, um, I'm out of the appetite to, to set a precedent today. Uh, I think that would be sending the wrong message to, um, licenses that come before this board as far as the severity as to all the time and effort that we put forward in order to make sure that businesses in our community operate accordingly and to take it lightly. Uh, having had, since August twenty-sixth, or August sixth, um, ample enough time to retain an attorney, I believe that, um, my position today would be to move forward with this item.
Mr. Byrne?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this matter is on for a disciplinary complaint. The allegations of the complaint state that on two occasions, Mr. Cooper operates a business known as Amazing Art Company, sold graffiti implements to minors.
All right, uh, please speak up a little louder, please.
I'm sorry. Sold graffiti implements to minors. In the first instance, it was, the sale took place on February twelfth, two thousand nine. In that case, uh, Mr. Cooper was found guilty in a municipal court proceeding and sentenced to probation. Legally, that violation's established. The second violation occurred on June seventeenth of two thousand ten. In this case, Mr. Cooper was served with the complaint on August twenty-sixth of two thousand ten. He had until September fifteenth to submit a written answer, he hasn't done that. Pursuant to the code, the factual allegations of the complaint are deemed admitted. Additionally, I've submitted to both the council, the clerk, and Mr. Cooper documentary evidence establishing each of the two offenses. So I believe this matter is actually, based on the code, the failure to answer is concluded factually in its question of whether Mr. Cooper has any justification for violations due to penalty.
Mr. Byrne, he may be right, but I, I'm not going to accept that. The gentleman, by appearing here and saying that he wants to contest it, he's entitled for that, as far as I'm concerned, had he got an attorney, the attorney would have responded for him, he indicates that he isn't, uh, skilled with the legal procedures, so, uh, I tell you to put your, uh, evidence on, and, uh, then he can rebut it.
Okay, Your Honor, to a certain extent, I offered the exhibits and the evidence, have you been accepted?
Uh, if you've offered them, they are admitting to evidence, yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Then I would call the first witness as Detective Bill Schoen.
Very good, detective?
Uh, Your Honor, as a predicate, the, uh, the Metro detectives have questioned that their faces not be shown on camera.
And that's not, not a problem, as I understand it, uh, they are trying to protect their anonymity, and, uh, the record will reflect that the detective has responded to his name and will be permitted to testify without the camera facing.
Uh, Detective Schoen, could you identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Detective William Schoen, S-C-H-O-E-N. I'm with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department Special Investigations Section.
Were you present at the Amazing Art Company on August seventeenth, two thousand ten?
I was present on June seventeenth, two thousand ten.
Sorry, I missed the day, June seventeenth.
Yes, sir.
Now, what was the purpose of your presence at that time?
The purpose there was to, uh, conduct a covert compliance check utilizing an underage decoy, um, to see if, uh, Mr. Cooper would or would not sell restricted items, those being graffiti implements to a minor.
Did you verify the age of the under, of the decoy?
I did, through a Nevada state-issued ID.
Now, what was his date of birth?
It was January twelfth of nineteen ninety-three.
So he was seventeen years old at the time?
Yes, sir.
Was he provided with any currency?
Yes, he was.
And how much was that?
I believe sixty dollars in the form of three twenty-dollar bills.
Did the decoy enter the premises of Amazing Art?
He did.
Did he subsequently leave the premises?
Yes.
Did he have anything in his possession at the time?
He did.
And what were they?
I believe four cans of spray paint, uh, multiple, uh, spray can tips, and some stickers.
Did he, uh, have any currency in his possession at the time he returned?
He did, uh, he had the, uh, the remainder of the currency, the, the purchase denied. It, it didn't add up to, uh, what I gave him, and I think I told you sixty dollars, I meant forty dollars, I apologize for that.
Did he return eight dollars in change?
He did.
Did you subsequently enter the premises of Amazing Art?
Yes.
Did you speak to Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Did, uh, he make any statements about, uh, the sale of the product to this individual?
Um, he, he did.
Did he admit that he sold the, uh, the spray paint?
Yes.
Did you speak to the minor also after he left the store?
Yes.
It's sort of like a whispering between the two of us, speak up, please. Maybe I'm getting old, I don't know, but I can't hear anything.
Okay, I'm sorry, Your Honor.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
Did you speak to the minor after he left the premises?
I did.
Did he relate to you his conversation with Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
And what did he relate to you?
He said that, uh, Mr. Cooper did not ask him for identification, or ask him how old he was. Uh, he said that he, he being Mr. Cooper, sold him the spray paint, uh, without reservation, and he even provided our decoy with, uh, complimentary, so to speak, uh, spray tips for the spray paint cans, as well as stickers. Uh, he also, he being Mr. Cooper, also asked our decoy if he was working with the police, or if he was a junior cadet.
And, uh, at, at this time, I just have to say, Mr. Cooper, had you had a lawyer, the lawyer would have been objecting that this was hearsay, but because we're in an administrative proceeding, I would rule that hearsay is admissible, just so you know.
Okay, um...
Okay, but I'll get to you, you'll have a chance to examine the witness.
Detective Schoen, did the minor also indicate that he had told Mr. Cooper that he wanted to buy some spray paint because his parents had taken away his paint?
That's correct.
That's all the question, all the questions I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Uh, Mr. Cooper, you're allowed to ask, uh, questions on cross-examination of Detective Schoen.
Um, you know, I, uh, I really don't know exactly what to ask or how to word it. Um, my problem with the underage decoy that they used is he was bigger than me and had full facial hair, and I didn't believe that he was under the age of eighteen, and how come I didn't ask him?
Why don't you ask the detective to describe, uh, the, uh, the decoy to you?
I have a photo of him, but I don't know if we're allowed to use it because he's a minor.
You can show it to the detective and ask him whether this is the person to whom he was referring? Sure. All right, uh, Mr. Cooper showing the detective a picture and asking him whether or not that's the person that he's been referring to as the underage minor who made the purchase.
Uh, Mayor and council, this is the person in question, however, I'd like to point out that he did not look this way. This is not a picture of him on the day in question.
Okay.
Um, then also, um, you know, when I did have an attorney and legal counsel, um, the, that was explained to me that the law read that no one was able to purchase spray paint without, um, permission of a, a parent or a responsible adult. And then it would be my feeling that if, if he was working with the police department, that his parents did give him permission to work with the police.
Why don't you do this, why don't you ask the detective whether or not, uh, he, he knew whether or not this young man's parents were, uh, aware of the fact that he was assisting the police?
Were, were the young man's parents aware that he was assisting the police?
Yes.
So then it would...
Right, then, you will save that for your argument, okay? You ask the pertinent question, and you'll have a chance to, uh, tell us why you think it's important that that fact be established.
Um...
No, later, later.
Oh.
Do you have any other questions of, uh, the detective? So far, you're doing pretty good.
I, uh, the, the only other question that I would have of the detective, um... You know, that is a very, I'm very passionate about what I do, and if I seem upset or flustered, then, then I apologize.
Don't apologize, don't, she's fine.
Um, I wanted to ask the detective, um, that, um, so they did in turn. The police gave him permission to buy a product at the store, and the parents gave him permission to, um, buy the, to work with the police and buy the paint.
The parents did give permission, um, I would say that we gave permission, we enlisted his services.
Okay, and then I...
You'll argue that as soon as the, uh, the city concludes its presentation.
Okay, and then, you know, I didn't know if you guys wanted to see the picture of the, the guy that bought the paint or not, with the city council, like this...
Not necessarily, because the, uh, the state of the record at this point is that the detective says that it does not appear to be the same physical condition as it was on the day that the purchase was made. Have any other questions?
Um, no, I, I don't believe that I...
Okay, thank you. Your next witness, Mr. Byrne?
I have one question on...
All right.
Detective Schoen, was, uh, the undercover decoy's parents present at the time of the purchase?
No.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, next witness, please.
Mayor Goodman, may I ask our legal counsel a legal question, please?
Certainly, that would be Mr. Jervick.
Yes, Mr. Jervick, um, if Mr. Cooper had a good faith belief that the person he sold this paint to was eighteen years of age or older, is that a defense to this offense?
I don't think good faith belief is, is the standard here. The, let me read to you the code, uh, exactly. This is, "No person other than a responsible adult shall sell, exchange, give, loan, or in any way furnish a graffiti implement to any minor without the consent of the minor's responsible adult." It is, according to the code, at least under my interpretation, Mr. Burns can chime in here, it is the responsibility of the seller to ensure that the individual they are selling to is eighteen years of age or older. If it were merely good faith, uh, and that were the standard, based on how somebody appeared, we'd have a very subjective standard that I think would be very vague and ambiguous, be subject to who's, you know, how old do you think somebody is, everybody could differ on that. Does facial hair determine it, does, does baldness determine it, does height, does size determine it? I, I think the, the code is blunt, it's actually knowing that the person is over eighteen years of age, and it's their responsibility to ID him to check it. That's my interpretation.
That's correct, it would be similar to offenses dealing with alcohol, cigarettes, gaming. It's under licensee to make sure the person's the appropriate age.
All right, your next witness, please.
My next witness is Detective DeShutter. Could you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, Detective John DeShutter.
Yes, Detective John Deschutter with Metro Police. First name is J O H N. Last name is spelled D E S C H U T T E R. I'm assigned to the gang unit and the graffiti investigation section.
Detective, were you present at Amazing Art on June 17th, 2010?
Yes, I was.
And were you there for the purpose of monitoring an undercover operation to determine whether graffiti implements were being sold to minors?
Yes, I was.
What date was that again, Council?
June, sorry, June 17th, 2010.
That's the same incident that Detective Schon...
It's the same incident. Did you enter the store at any time that day?
Yes, I did. I entered after the decoy had left.
Did you engage in conversation with Mr. Cooper?
Yes, I did.
And could you describe that conversation?
Had a conversation with Mr. Cooper as I was the officer in charge of issuing the citation. I let him know that he was in violation of city code for furnishing graffiti implements to minors. He stated he didn't check for ID or ask his age, and that he was selling paint because he needed to make rent by the end of that day.
Did you observe the signage in the store?
Yes, I observed it on that day, but I don't remember it off the top of my head.
Were there signage on the display cases indicating that no sales to anyone under eighteen without ID was required?
I can't say that I remember that off the top of my head.
I'd like to show you a photograph.
What exhibit is that?
This is part of exhibit number, number nine.
Which page?
It would be exhibit nine, exhibit nine, the third photograph. Third photograph, yes.
You referring to this must be eighteen with ID?
Yes.
All right.
Did you observe this signage at the store?
Yes, I did.
Did you take these photographs?
No, I didn't. My partner, Scott Black, Detective Scott Black, did that.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
All right. Mr. Cooper, you have any questions of the officer?
Yes, I would, did we speak prior to the raid on the store, the sting operation on the store?
When was the date of that?
I don't know exactly the date, but I had spoken to Detective Deschutter concerning our legal wall. I procure, curate, and run a legal wall so that the people have something to paint on that is not illegal and not vandalism and actually produces works of art. And then I don't know at what time I'm supposed to submit my evidence.
As soon as Mr. Burns is putting his evidence on.
Okay, and then I wanted, I don't know. You know, when I explained, when I explained to you the economical situation of my, of my situation that day, could you understand or see why I would be in such imperative need to make the money that I had to make?
I really don't know how to answer that if you're asking that. I understand that you broke the law, and you want me to say it's okay. It's, that's beyond me to give you permission to do anything like that.
No, I wasn't. It was, in the day in question, my landlord had come by at...
Well, no, no, that's for a different time.
I'm sorry, I...
Ask, if you have any other questions for the officer, this is the time to ask them.
Do you feel that our, my business has contributed to the Las Vegas art movement and the art district and the overall advancement of art in Las Vegas?
Your Honor, I'm not sure that that's a question this witness is capable of answering.
I think you give his opinion.
Well, I don't really know how to answer this. I would say he does participate with the legal wall downtown, participates with known artists, but he also has been caught furnishing illegal graffiti to the underage people who are the ones who do the most costly graffiti damage. Last estimate, thirty million dollars in Nevada as of 2008, so I don't know how else to answer your question, sir.
Oh, you answered it.
Okay.
You stuck with your answer.
May I?
Yep.
Has at any time the police department asked me to cooperate with them in bringing to justice the people that paint or tag or vandalize the city in any sort of way? Have they asked me to help them in any way with their problem besides the sales?
No, we haven't.
And then I don't know when, you know, I'm supposed to say, what I'm supposed to say, you know...
As I said, when Mr. Burns is through with this witness, and you're through asking him questions, and Mr. Burns says that the city rests, then you'll have your opportunity to say whatever you want to say. Not it. Well, I went a little too far there to protect your defense.
Other than that, I really have no questions.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Burns?
No, Your Honor, the city rests.
Any other witnesses?
No, Your Honor.
So wait.
The city rests.
City rests, all right. I think you've got a big problem with the case. I mean, I brought a machete with me today. If I was going to vote against you, I was going to give you a choice, lose your license or lose your thumb.
How about a pinky?
No, I'm serious. But I gotta be honest with you. I, under the law, you tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Durbick, it talks in terms of without the consent of adults, and the testimony is that his parents consented, so I...
If I could, I thought that that could be an issue. That is not the way the law should be interpreted in this case, Your Honor, and I'll give you a legal opinion on that. There are, there are two sections here, 10.48.090 and 10.48.095. 090 says, "No person other than a responsible adult shall sell, exchange, give, loan, or in any way furnish a graffiti implement to a minor without the minor's responsible adult." There is only one reasonable interpretation of that, and that is that the store owner needs to know that the minor's responsible adult has given permission. That's why kids can go into Home Depot with their parents and buy spray paint. That's why an individual who's a minor can go in and buy these implements. It's written differently than the tobacco statutes, because the tobacco statutes, under no circumstances can a minor buy a pack of cigarettes, even with the minor's adult's consent. But paint is different, and we say that they can with the minor's responsible adult's consent. The next section talks about the minor shall have in his possession a graffiti implement without the permission or consent of the minor's responsible adult. Same thing. If we catch a minor with it, we need to know that their parent has given permission. I think the defense that because this individual worked with Metro and by implication must have had the consent of the minor's adult.
By implication, no. It's stated that his parents gave him consent. That's in the state of the record.
Right, and I think, I think it's also in the record that Mr. Burns asked whether or not the adult that would have given that consent was present at the time of the acquisition of the paint, and the answer to that question was no.
But that's not required under the law. It says without the consent of the minor's responsible adult. That's a plain language. I know, you know, I know what I'd like to do for people who are engaged in graffiti that cost us millions of dollars a year, but I also want to follow the law. That's where I am right now, I'm sorry.
I've given your opinion.
Right, I'm going to take the vote, right. And then if I lose the vote, we'll go on with the defense. I'm going to move that the complaint be dismissed. Sure. Sure, but you can vote against it, too. That's fine.
I know.
I think before we get into it, Councilwoman, I would just like to make a point of order here. We're not, at this point in time, debating the merits of whether the individual is liable or not liable for the complaint. It's a technicality that the mayor has raised. He's making a motion to dismiss based on the fact that he believes that, under the law, without even going into the facts, under the law, there could not have possibly been a violation of the statute. Is that correct, Mayor?
That is correct.
I think that that's the only issue right now.
Of course, he didn't know if the parents said or not, because he never even asked. And I would think that he should have asked.
I made a motion, and let's vote on that. Yes or no? Vote for the motion. Post?
Mayor, prior to the motion?
Yes.
If you just restate the motion, just so that I'm clear.
Basically, I'm saying that I don't believe that the city has carried its burden of proof because of the fact that the record to me is uncontradicted as far as parental consent, and that would be one of the requirements, and I'm saying that the city hasn't met its burden, therefore, I'm moving to dismiss. If you disagree with me, then you should vote no. If you agree with me, you should vote yes.
Thank you.
And my feelings aren't going to be hurt. All right, please vote. Post? Okay, motion loses. Mr. Burns?
I can make a comment here. You see who the attorneys are, and you see who the, I guess, the other people just live out in the neighborhoods and see what goes on. Now, wait a minute, wait here, Councilman, and I appreciate that, but I have a seat in the courtroom, so I don't understand, you know, all the legal that we go through each and every time we have items like this becoming a portion. I've always appreciated the questions that you guys ask. I do, and I have, and I still do. I just feel like this here, I want to see what happens because I feel like that the people I have seen, and I've seen one person, he had a spray can, and he acted like he had sprayed before. If I could have caught him, I would have probably killed him, and I'd have probably been in jail. That made me that mad. And I just, I've been fighting this graffiti issue for sixteen years, and all I've seen it do is go from bad to worse to worse to worse. It's just getting that way. And I hate to see anything happen on a technicality that I could probably vote yes or I could have voted no, but I wanted to vote no because I want to go ahead and hear this. I want to hear what this young man has to say in his own defense so that I can make, to me, a decision which I think will maybe benefit other people going out there trying to sell this graffiti paint and showing them how to do it. That's what bothers me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Cooper, your turn to either call witnesses or to make an argument to convince the council that you didn't do anything wrong.
I didn't, I didn't...
You have any witnesses?
I don't have any witnesses. I thought I was going to make the money to have legal counsel, and I...
Okay, do you want to testify now? I'll put you under oath if you want to testify, or you can just say I want to make an argument to appeal to the council.
Well, I personally would like to testify as to...
We'll let you testify then. Are you going to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, then testify, please. I'm not going to swear.
As far as the sales to the minor goes, I really didn't think that he was under eighteen. What he has said to me when he asked for paint, that he wanted something to really make your eyes bleed, was almost enough for me to refuse service to him at that time. Then it crossed my mind that it is probably not my right to tell somebody if they're painting something what color that they can paint it. I do my very best to, even with that gentleman who did buy the paint, I offered him different colors of paint that would be less offensive. I offered him, you know, advice as to maybe that wouldn't go with that. I told him about our legal wall and his ability to paint the legal wall. I thought he was still acting kind of strange, so I asked him if he was with the police department, had anything to do with the police department, or if I would get in any trouble of any kind by selling him paint, and he said no. And then I sold him the paint. And I regret my mistake, and I am sorry. But on a more personal level, I have done everything in my power to encourage people not to do illegal work, to encourage them to do legal work. I have provided a place in my store and a place downtown for the expression of art and legal artwork. And other than that, I collected a picture, pictures of a hundred and seventy different legal artworks that I have produced for Las Vegas and, you know, for the art district and for Ed Fountain Park and various other things. And it is my every intention to make Las Vegas a more beautiful place. And then also, I would like to state for the record that the police detectives have never asked me to cooperate with them in removing or helping them remove people that vandalize city property. And I can't tell you on a personal level how frustrating it is when I go downtown and I clean up four garbage trucks full of trash, or, you know, pickup trucks full of trash. I paint a three-hundred-and-twenty-foot wall by myself to provide something for the art community, and then I go down to look at my work, and I get off of the freeway, and somebody has spray painted in a dollar can that they have got from Walmart, sells spray paint for ninety-nine cents, and they have a self-checkout counter. It is very easy for people to come across inexpensive spray paint. But I can't tell you how frustrating it is for me when I go to look at, you know, what I've provided and what I've worked so hard for. And then to have, you know, ink and wrecker who spray painted on the Charleston underpass, and then have ink and wrecker spray painted on the other side of the Charleston underpass, and then have ink and wrecker spray painted on the building, you know, down the street. And then I get to the legal wall where I've provided paint, and I've provided service, and I've provided hours and hours of work, to have them have painted over, not in any kind of artwork, but just in vandalism, ink and wrecker, over the beautiful murals that the other people have spent a lot of time and money to produce. And I, you know, I don't know the person personally who writes ink on everything. I do believe that their name's Marisol Lopez, and she attends some high school here in Las Vegas, but I would more than be willing to work with the police or the city council or whoever in order to get the vandals off.
Okay, I think we're going a little straight here.
I'm sorry, I...
No problem. Anything else?
Mayor Goodman?
No.
I just have a question for the gentleman, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind at all.
Mr. Cooper, you mentioned when the gentleman came into your store, you asked him a number of questions, one being, were you with the police? Why did you ask the gentleman if he was with the police? Can you explain?
I asked him if he was with the police because he had said he wanted colors that would make people's eyes hurt, and that's not generally a question that somebody would ask or something that they were looking for. And it made me suspicious as of his intentions as to what he was going to do with the paint. I sell a very, you know, it's eight dollars a can, and it's a low-pressure paint, and it's not really used for, like, if you were going to vandalize something, you know, it's not the product that you would pick to vandalize something.
So don't you understand why you would ask him if he was with the police? Because he asked, you just stayed... Because he asked, you just stated that he asked for a low-pressure paint, but how is that synonymous with police?
Well, he had asked for a low-pressure paint in colors that were going to make somebody's eyes hurt, and it made me suspicious of his intentions. So, I asked him, you know, being as I had already been in trouble once, I asked him if he was with the police, you know, working with the police, or if I would get in any trouble of any kind by selling him spray paint, because I'm desperately trying to stay out of trouble, and, but, you know-
So, let me just stop you there. So, if you felt the hair on the back of your neck go up, or a question might come up in your mind as to whatever reason he asked for the low-pressure paint, and that being synonymous with police, and you were concerned about selling him this paint, then why did you move forward to sell him the paint versus not sell him the paint?
About an hour before the gentleman came to buy the paint, my landlord had stopped by my store. As the offense did happen on the 17th, I had been served with a five-day notice on the 6th. The landlord was gracious enough to let me go until the 17th without posting eviction notice. The landlord came by my store and-
Let me just stop you there, because I think you're getting a little bit off.
Well, no, I, you know, please, let me continue with that. You asked why I would go ahead and sell him paint if the-
So, you needed money?
Well, yes. I had $2,162.
That's fine. So, you established the fact that you were trying to get paid. Secondly, how often do you ask your patrons for their ID when they come in and purchase paint?
I ask everybody who looks roughly under the age of 20 years old to provide ID on sales, and anybody who walks in the store who doesn't look like they would be of age, I tell them when they walk in, I'm like, "You gotta be 18 with an ID to buy paint, guys. 18 with an ID."
How often do you ask them for ID prior to selling them paint?
Usually right before I ring it up.
So, at any point, did the gentleman whom you sold the paint to look under 20?
No, I offered to show you guys his picture.
To you, did he look under 20?
Not really, no.
Okay.
He appeared to be in his 20s. He had full facial hair. He is taller than I am and whiter than I am, and-
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Appeared to be a big boy.
Going back to the age and the question of whether or not the gentleman was with the police, why didn't you ask him for his ID to at least calm your nerves, being that you needed the money, to calm your nerves and make sure that you were within the parameter of the law to sell him the paint, being that your license allowed you to sell to 18 and over? Why didn't you ask him for his ID?
I didn't ask him for his ID, because I was afraid he would start in with some story that he had left it in the car, or that, you know, he didn't have it, or it was at home.
Is his excuse more valuable than your license, or is your license more valuable than his excuse that you perceived him to tell you?
At the moment, if I didn't have 320 more dollars by 5 o'clock, my business would've been closed.
So, in essence, it was just about the money, so you sold it to him because you needed the money?
You know, I tried to make sure that I would not get in any trouble, he looked overage to me, and then I did sell him the paint, because I needed 320 more dollars by 5 o'clock, or my business was closed.
Okay.
And I have worked six years-
Mayor, thank you so very much.
Very good, that was a good question.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Mr. Cooper, are you, I'm gonna ask you this, I think you already know the answer. Are you aware of the millions of dollars that governments waste in graffiti abatement?
Um, yes, I am, sir.
Do you know how straining that is on government budgets today?
Um, yes, I am.
Then please answer for this council and myself, why on earth are you in the business of selling graffiti stuff? Nozzles, tips, paint? I mean, why are you in that business? I appreciate you're artistic, and you have probably tremendous abilities. We do have an art district, and I'm glad you mentioned that. Do you have oil painting, oil paint in your shop? Do you have clay in your shop? Do you have canvases in your shop?
Yes, we do have canvases, we have pastels, we have watercolors, we have drawing books, we have marker sets, like, we have a lot of other things that aren't related to graffiti.
I am challenged, however, looking at the photos in the backup from the investigation of your store. I don't see any of that. What I see are instruments to deface and destruct people's property throughout this valley. That's what I see.
It was my feeling from looking at the photos. I received a copy of the photos last night at 5 o'clock, and it was my feeling that the police really, when they took the photos, didn't give me a, didn't take the picture, they didn't take any pictures of the art. They didn't take any pictures of the legal stuff. They took pictures of my back store room, and they took pictures of underneath my counter by my trash can, and didn't take any pictures of the legal thing, you know, the regular art supplies and the legal artwork that I have hanging in my store in an effort to make me look bad in front of you guys.
Thank you.
And then, like, I had, was, you know, I tried to provide photos today, but was unable to of those things, but, you know, if I would've been granted a later court hearing, all of the photos would've been included, because I run a very nice store. When you walk into my store, it looks nice, it's kept clean, I really try to provide something for Las Vegas that, you know, other people don't really know.
Mayor, if I may. Mr. Cooper, I appreciate you being a small business owner, and we, as local governments, are doing everything we can to help our small business owners. That's what's gonna help our economy, that's what's gonna help us get back on track economically. I am challenged, however, by you even having to be here today. You shouldn't even be here. If you were a legitimate business, do legitimate things in this community, you wouldn't be here. And I'm challenged, and all of us are as council members, of the money we spend on fixing all these tags, all this graffiti throughout Southern Nevada. And it bothers me deeply that we waste taxpayer money on something we don't have to. And it bothers me that you have a store where I can go buy that stuff, and you probably would teach me how to use it.
As far as that goes, all the products that are sold in our store, you can buy at many, many other stores. Blick's Art Supplies is right up from me. They sell Montana paint, they sell spray tips, they sell trinket markers. Walmart sells dollar cans, and I would think that, you know, being in the business of art that I am in, if you guys wanted to really, really fight graffiti, and I'm not trying to sound facetious or like a jerk in any sort of way, but if they really wanted to cut down on the vandalism in the city, Walmart should not be permitted to sell spray cans for a dollar. And then they're just far too easy for the people to steal. I mean, they get the spray cans, they come to the self-checkout line, they scan a can of hairspray, and they drop a can of spray paint in the bag, and they scan a can of hairspray, and they drop a can of spray paint in the bag, and they walk out with just shopping carts full of cans that only cost them a dollar apiece.
You better stop there. We don't wanna give anybody ideas on how to do it.
Well, I'm not, I'm just-
I appreciate, I appreciate your answer, Mr. Cooper. One more question, Mayor, and I appreciate your position on the technicality of this issue, both you and councilmen.
No problem.
And this is the legal council. Today's statutes, our ordinances, 18 years old, I can be 18 years old and buy a can of spray paint. Is that correct?
That's correct.
How do we change that to 21? What difference would that make?
I don't know what difference it would make. The police department could probably identify it. I know in the findings made by the council at the beginning of this is that most graffiti is applied by individuals under the age of 18. That's why that age was selected. And I suppose if you could show a record that most is applied by people under the age of 21, you could probably raise that age. But I know that there are a number of moving components to the statute, but I know that the findings that went into selecting the age 18 were finding that most graffiti was applied by individuals under the age of 18.
Isn't that interesting? You can be 18 and go serve your country, but I brought up that you can't be 18 and buy paint. Isn't that amazing? What kind of society in the city do we live in?
I don't know. I think you can't buy a martini either.
You can't, you can buy paint. Let me make that clear. You can, if you're under 18. You can't. 18 or over, you can. But I guess your question was, could you move it from 18 to 21? That would depend on the record that you could establish.
That's been answered.
Yeah, Phil, I have a couple of questions for you. Mr. Cooper received a citation for each incident, correct?
Correct, hon. Correct, Councilman.
And it went to municipal court?
On the earlier incident from 2009, it went to municipal court, and he was entered into a plea agreement, so he was found guilty.
And he was, so he was found guilty on the first incident?
Yes.
What about the second incident?
The second is still pending.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions to the council? All right, the councilwoman.
I just wanted to follow up on what Starvis said, and that is, was he found guilty? Are you sure? My council next to me is saying he wasn't found guilty.
He entered a plea, and he's currently on probation for that offense.
And so, he entered a guilty plea?
He submitted on the record, and he's currently on probation.
Well, submit on the record is different than being found guilty, and that's, you know, I'm looking, with your permission, Councilwoman and Mayor, I'm looking at the backup right here, and the court minutes on citation CO-746079A, violation description graffiti implements with intent to vandalize. On January 25th of 2010, it was a submittal. Now, unless I'm wrong, Mr. Jerbik, that's not a guilty plea.
No, ma'am.
He's not, excuse me, that's not an adjudication. He wasn't found guilty.
The adjudication, I think, occurs at the end, but I need to have Mr. Burns correct the record. It depends on what the probation is. I know that, and I appreciate your point, and I think we need to make this clear, just because he did not contest the facts does not necessarily mean he pled guilty, and the probation may have at the end of it a condition that would allow it to be dismissed. I need to make that clear for the record. Mr. Burns, do you know the conditions of the probation and whether or not this is-
Right here, it says suspended sentence one year, dismiss case upon completion. So, there's no guilty finding on this.
And he also forfeited his bail at that time, too.
Well, Mr. Burns, you and I can debate this a lot, but I'll bet you a thousand bucks right now, on this one, I'm right.
I would advise the council-
Let me just say-
He hasn't been found guilty of this charge.
I would advise the council, and I think Councilman Wilson's right on this point, that at the end of the case, if he has not failed probation already and something has happened, if he is still on probation, and if the condition is, if he passes it, he will get a dismissal of the case, then there is not a final adjudication yet. So, right now, I would urge you just to consider the fact that there was a charge in municipal court for which, and the facts speak for themselves, he did not challenge the record, submitted to probation with the condition it may be dismissed. Consider that and only that.
Real quickly, he may very well be found guilty, but he hasn't been found guilty yet, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
All right, I'm not done.
Oh, okay.
The lawyer took over here. To me, the important thing is that if you were found guilty or not, you did sell a second time and were cited for selling earlier in February to a minor, right?
Um, yes, I was cited both times.
Cited for selling to a minor, and then there was a plea agreement that all these lawyers understand all that, but you were cited, you did sell to a minor at that time. And the other thing I wanted to say, that, you know, along with what Councilman Barlow said, it can't just be that you need money and that's why you don't do due diligence. In other words, you're saying you didn't ask this man because you were concerned about you needed money in order to be able to pay your landlord in a few hours. And I'm saying that's really not a reason or an excuse for not following the due diligence that's needed as far as the age of the buyer is concerned. Just as a matter of record, I would like to say that I asked Jace to look up the amount of monies that it did cost us. It's $30 million that it costs the Southern Nevada public entities as well as the businesses for graffiti. That's the amount of cost for correction of graffiti. I also would like to point out, which probably doesn't mean anything to the lawyers, I know that area well, I lived near there, and I will tell you, we had a burst, a large burst of graffiti in that area, and it lasted several months. And then all of a sudden, we weren't seeing it. I mean, we had seen it on the palm trees, on the utilities, Alba Alta, you know, which is a special SID, and we had difficulty being able to control that. Well, all of a sudden, it stopped. And when it was covered, it didn't come again. It was a dribble, if anything, as far as the graffiti. And it wasn't until later that I found out that at that same time, that was when this store and this gentleman here was told that he could no longer be selling that at his store. So, it wasn't coming out of there, which I thought was of interest, may mean nothing to the lawyers, but I thought it was of interest. What I am pointedly going to ask is this, if I could, Mr. Jerbik. Does the law require the parents to give permission to the underage child, or require that permission be given to the seller? And that might be a strange question, but that's what I would ask.
I think that is the seminal question. It goes right to the heart of the mayor's motion to dismiss. I believe that the adult has to consent to the purchase in front of the seller. The seller has to know that the parent or guardian has consented to the minor's acquisition of the product.
Well, that was my understanding of it before, but I wanted to check on that. Okay, that's my last question.
Very good. Are there any other questions? All right, I don't think there's a need. Oh, sorry, Councilwoman. Well, I was gonna say, I don't believe there's a need for any further argument. I think we've heard everything, and I was going to ask the councilwoman for a motion.
Could I rebut to Ms. Tarkanian's statement? Or not rebut, but may I say? I live in the area also, and I work in the area, and I had noticed the increase in graffiti. And the reason, my belief is, that the graffiti problem diminished and then turned almost into a trickle, is because we opened the legal wall, and people were legally allowed to paint, and then I put up probably 30 canvases in the store and told people that they could write or paint on those, and then I ran a, I guess it's 30-foot banner down the side wall inside the store, and told people that if they wanted to paint or write, that they could write there. So, then the graffiti that was on the street and in the area, then, like, I absorbed it. I mean, literally, literally, I, my store absorbed it.
I don't know if you're aware that we have other places where you can do the graffiti type, what we call urban art, and we have other places. It isn't just downtown. We even will have under the Tenaya Underpass eventually, a spot where we will have the urban art. And we have had the murals. Now, our experience has been with the murals, that when we put the murals on, they're not graffiti. The only place we ever had any was right behind Mirabelli, and we've had about 10 murals placed up in different places. So, I don't know what happened there. All I know is, I'm telling you, I don't know the timing of what you did, I just know the timing of what I'm aware. I feel very strongly about this, and I must say that I will move to have action taken, how do I word this, to have the license removed.
All right, the councilman, did you want to be heard before we take the vote?
No, Mayor. I will be following Councilwoman Tarkanian's recommendation.
Okay, very good. All right, you heard the motion. Let's vote, please. Post? Thank you, gentlemen.
Your Honor, could I point out one matter for the council?
Yes.
Pursuant to the code, the order of revocation takes effect upon written service unless the council-
You have to speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm shifting the microphone again. Pursuant to the code, the order of revocation takes effect upon service of the written order unless the council provides otherwise. Is that acceptable with the council?
When would the written order be prepared?
We prepare it, and we submit it for your signature, and then formally serve.
I think that's the best way to do it, probably, that'd be more formal.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. That's it. That's it.
All right. Well, I brought you guys these pictures.
We're through with this one.
I know, but if you'd like to look at them?
Okay, thanks.
There are 170 pictures of legal artwork that I'm responsible for.
Thank you. Item 64, is this special impossible action regarding complaint seeking disciplinary action against Rand Oriental Therapy LLC doing business at Shangri-La Health Clinic at 430 East Sahara Avenue in Las Vegas, Park County, Nevada, for violations of the Las Vegas Municipal Code. This is in Ward 3. Mr. Burns?
Yes, Your Honor, this is out for approval, but disciplinary complaint. I request that the complaint be approved and the matter be set for hearing within 60 days.
All right, that will be the order. Do you want to give me a date, within 60 days?
The only date is November seventeenth.
November seventeenth.
Okay, Mr. Burn, you'll get that document to me for my signature, correct?
Yes, your honor, thank you.
All right, very good. Now, if you would, Mr. Burn, the gentleman left photographs, I think, can we better place them with the clerk for safekeeping? Okay, there's a motion to set the date. Let's vote on that, please. Post.
It was November seventeenth.
Yes, that's November seventeenth.
Then we have, if we have problems, we get that we can...
Right, that gives us a vote, right. All right, that's the date then. At this time, even though it's not agendized, I see in our midst Billy Bastian, who has served the city so very, very well in her capacity as the Director of Leisure Services. She's always had a smile on her face, she's always tried to please all of us as far as her programming is concerned. It's a wonderful department that does a wonderful job for our constituents, and this is your last meeting, Billy, so I wanted all the council to give you a nod of thanks at this time because you served us well, and we wish you well in your future endeavors.
Mayor, if I could, Ms. Bastian, I've been here sixteen years, and you've always been there. I don't care what time of the day it is tonight or what day of the week it was, if I needed help, you was always there. So, thank you very much, from me and my family.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Proton, thank you, Mayor Goodman.
Thank you.
I have to tell you, it was kind of funny, I was back in my office and they said I needed to come back over to address you on a very important issue. And so, I really want to tell you and each and every member of the council how much I've enjoyed being the Director of the Department of Leisure Services and spending all the years, twenty-four years of them, right here in my hometown as a public servant. I take great proud, pride in what you say, Mayor Proton, because I do feel like I have been available, I've been passionate about the parks and recreation programs and activities and facilities that we have provided to our Las Vegas city residents. And it's very heartfelt for me, for you to call me back here today and to acknowledge me and recognize me, and especially so that my family can enjoy this moment in the light later on after this is recorded, because they're the ones who also made some tremendous sacrifices as I was going about the business of serving the youth and families and seniors in Las Vegas. So I'm very honored you'd call me back here today and really relieved that you don't have, expecting a formal presentation from me. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mayor Goodman. Yes, councilwoman. Billy, before you leave, mayor, I've now worked for the city of Las Vegas for ten years, and from the first day that I came to work here at the city, Billy Bastian was a true mentor to me on many fronts, and having had an opportunity to grow over the last ten years working with you, Billy, I want to say thank you for all that you've done for me personally. There's been many nights that we were on the phone late talking about city's business and parks and lights being on and what have you, but also we had an opportunity to talk about family, schooling, your assistance with providing me with guidance for the master program, having gone through it yourself. And I just really appreciate those special moments because it has helped me to develop into a good person on many fronts due to the knowledge that you have shared, but most notably, all of the great people you've touched over the course of your time spent here at the city of Las Vegas. You grew up here in the city, and you grew up in the city of Las Vegas, and in particular, leisure services, and so you will most definitely be sorely missed. I was excited to push the button for you to be the next director after Barbara Jackson left, and it's most definitely, it's sad, but I'm happy for you that you're able to retire and move on to the next fold of your life. So good luck to you, God bless you, and thank you for all of the wonderful times and conversations we've had an opportunity to share.
Thank you, Councilman Barney, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilwoman.
I just want to tell you that your passion and your enthusiasm and your honesty and working with you has just been magnificent. My whole staff felt you a bright light in our day, and that we had meetings with you, they were enjoyment-type of meetings, even if there were problems involved and how we should all work together. And we're going to miss you a lot. I just want to tell you, it hurt when I heard you were leaving, and you got my message, I think, I just said you're too young to retire, and we meant that, and I just, the bottom of my heart, wanted to say the great appreciation that we have for what you've done, and I will truly, truly miss you.
Mayor Goodman, I'm going to miss your smiling face, most of all, at our briefings. You're always very kind and very good at what you do, but you always bring a real nice smiling face, and I'm going to miss it.
Thank you very much for saying that.
Good luck, people.
All right, I won't be far, I'm going to remain here in Las Vegas, and my whole life is surrounded in volunteerism, so I'm sure you'll see me out and about in your wards and enjoying Las Vegas from a citizen's perspective. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item sixty-six is Bill number two thousand ten dash thirty-four, revises the provisions regarding the onsite parking, storage, and repair of vehicles in residential districts. Councilman Barlow, do you wish...
Pardon me. Pardon me, I apologize. Item sixty-five is discussion and possible action regarding a review of work card for Leslie L. Hamm doing business at Seven-Eleven's Food Store, one-three-six-nine-oh, located at twenty-six ninety-one West Sahara Avenue, and this is in Ward one. Mr. DeFiori.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a six-month review of a work card appeal for Leslie Hamm employed at the Seven-Eleven on Sahara Avenue. I do know that Ms. Hamm has worked at Seven-Eleven without incident during the last six months, and that she does have the support of her employer for continued employment. We're willing to go forward today with a recommendation for a permanent work card with site-specific as a condition.
Very good. Would you wish to be heard, ma'am?
Yes, I just wanted to apologize for my employers that are not able to be here today, and I got, they know about the appeal and everything, they know about today, but they're not able to be here. So I just wanted to apologize for that.
Okay, no reason to apologize. Mr. DeFiori already spoke to them, and they assured him that you're a valued employee.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Councilwoman, your motion, please.
I move to follow staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Let's go, please. All right, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, we'll go to sixty-six again. Bill number two thousand ten dash thirty-four revises the provisions regarding the onsite parking, storage, and repair of vehicles in residential districts. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have a read?
Yes, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, your honor, thank you, councilwoman. Bill number twenty-ten dash thirty-four, an ordinance to update the provisions regarding the onsite parking, storage, and repair of vehicles in residential districts, the product related matters. Mr. Steed is here with a proposed First Amendment, with your permission, your honor and councilman. I'd like to have him put that on the record.
Thank you.
Yes, members of council, this went to recommending with a due-pass recommendation, and after that hearing, we had a couple of things brought to our attention. First of all, a member of council was concerned about, one of the aspects of this bill is, was to allow as a paving, as a surface upon which you could park or store vehicles, decomposed granite and pavers and other blocks of uniform appearance. There was some concern raised about the use of decomposed granite, both in front yards and inside yards, so we made some adjustments there. And in the course of doing that, we discovered that one of the things that the original bill had intended to do was to prohibit completely the storage of recreational vehicles and trailers in front yards. And as it turned out, that was not going to be workable in some circumstances. So we have worked with the sponsor of the bill as well as with other members of council with a proposed First Amendment. In Regulation One, where it talks about where you can store vehicles and under what circumstances, the proposal would be not to allow decomposed granite in the side yard unless there is screening from the public view, and also to not allow it in the front yard except in zones that are designated RA and RE. The second change would be on page four, and you have the proposed First Amendment in front of you. That would allow the storage of recreational vehicles and trailers in front yards, but only in lots zoned RA, RE, RD, or R1. And only in those zoned RA or RE would there be allowed decomposed granite. The existing provisions of the code that place limitations on when you can have those recreational vehicles or trailers stored in the front yard would be continued. You couldn't store them closer than two feet from an adjacent public street or sidewalk, or you would have to demonstrate that you don't have any availability of a side or rear yard for that storage to occur. So with that, we recommend that you approve it as a First Amendment.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Ross. I believe that, I think Councilman Ross had something to say, and then I'd be happy to hear from you.
Yes, your honor, thank you. We've been working on improving our vehicle ordinance for some time now, and the purpose of the changes is to protect neighborhoods, update products for improving sustainability, clarifying the code for our code enforcement teams and neighbors. This change will help our sustainability efforts by allowing decomposed granite as a surface for RV parking. We will also be limiting the inoperable vehicles in neighborhoods and the repair of vehicles in neighborhoods to protect our communities. The code is clear on what vehicles are and are not allowed, and that's existing code. All of these changes benefit the city of Las Vegas residents, and I just wanted to put those comments on the record for the benefit of the rest of the council, and express my appreciation to Mayor Proton for his...
Yes, very good. And Mayor Proton, and then Mr. Barlow.
Sorry, Todd, I want to thank Councilman Ross for working with us in the old areas of Las Vegas. I understand what they have to do, we have to do the same thing all over the city of Las Vegas, and that's be free and equitable, and treat everybody the same. And this here, I think, is going to allow us to still enforce issues that we have in our three wards, and to do the best we can to make sure that our front yards are kept as they're supposed to be, and we're still not going to be able to park the cars up on the grass and stuff, so, and I appreciate working with Councilman Ross on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Rod. When this, before this was a debate, I asked if this was going to be before the recommending committee again, and I was assured it was, but the recommending committee meeting was canceled. So, you know, I didn't have my input. My thing is this, I work on old Ram chargers, and it's a hobby of mine, and I understand that it's not going to be a problem because it's way in the back on the side of the house. But I want to make sure, you know, that I'm, that I can, that I can still do that. I can. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ray. The council, what is your motion, please?
I would defer to...
The councilwoman?
I just want to ask a question. Now, you say you can park your RVs on decomposed granite, and is this in the front yard?
This, again, councilwoman, there has to be a certain-sized lot, so...
Well, you know, I do have some large lots, that's why I'm questioning you.
Well, then, this would, they're going to do the same thing they do out there in the North Western, they're going to have to put them in the back in a covered yard.
Still in the...
And they, if they have a large enough yard, then they can't put on decomposed granite in the back, not in the front.
Decom, okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't hear that whole thing. Thank you.
All right. The councilman Barlow, do you have your motion, please?
Yes, mayor, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation, and also thank Councilman Ross and Reese for a job done in regards to this ordinance moving forward. Thank you.
All right, then, let's go, please.
Does this approve as First Amendment?
Yes.
Yes, it is, thank you.
Post.
Can I just push that twice?
Motion carries, thank you. Item sixty-seven is Bill number two thousand ten dash forty, authorizes under certain circumstances an extension of time regarding the expiration of certain non-conforming uses. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have a read?
Yes, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, your honor. The councilman, Bill number twenty-ten dash forty, an ordinance to authorize under certain circumstances an extension of time regarding the expiration of certain non-conforming uses and product-related matters.
All right, thank you. Councilman, your motion, please.
Yes, move for approval.
Thank you, let's go. Post.
You see? Yes.
Motion carries, and I will state this, that Mr. Rankin in the briefing yesterday indicated this is really a cutting-edge change to the way business is done in the city of Las Vegas, and that basically we're leading the country as far as this particular ordinance is concerned.
Thank you, your honor, I'd like to be called the cutting-edge.
That's all right. Councilman, do you have a motion, please?
On item sixty-seven?
Okay, I don't know where I am. Been a long morning, Cat.
He's watching the baseball game.
Been a long morning for a short morning. Item sixty-eight is Bill number two thousand ten dash forty-one, updates the city's licensing regulations governing ice cream trucks, including revised provisions concerning hours of operation and signage. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have a read?
Prior to it having been read, I would like to make sure that Councilwoman Tarkanian, being that she's the sponsor of this, if everything meets your satisfaction.
Yes, it does, we were involved in working it up, so unless you've made some major changes, which I think I would have been told about...
No major changes.
Then I think that's fine.
Okay, great, so we would like for this item to be read, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, councilman. Bill number twenty-ten dash forty-one, an ordinance to update the city's licensing regulations regarding ice cream trucks, including revised provisions concerning hours of operation and signage and product-related matters. Thank you. Did you want to be heard?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Again, the recommending committee meeting was canceled. I would like to know, does this address the issue of the decibel level that the ice cream trucks can play their loudspeakers? Because it's driving us nuts in our area.
I don't believe it does.
It should, thank you.
I just want to back you up, they give out any free ice cream while in the truck?
You want to identify yourself for the record, or are you scared to not?
My name's Smith, my name, pardon, just Anthony, I'm sorry about that, I'm just trying to put a little laugh in your day, thank you.
And, thank goodness. All right. Okay, did we vote on that yet?
No, we did not.
Okay, have a motion, please.
Yes, mayor, move for approval, subject to all conditions.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make a comment. One of the reasons why we didn't consider the decibel level is because it has been so difficult in other areas, boombox use and others, to be able to effectively be able to utilize that they're over the decibels. And, you know, sometimes the air conditions and everything, it's just been so hard, so we felt we couldn't put that in. I just want to tell you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, new bills, items sixty-nine through seventy-two, which are Bills two thousand ten dash forty-two through two thousand ten dash forty-five, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, October nineteenth, two thousand and ten. Mr. Jervick, can you read those, please?
I'll be happy to, your honor. Bill number twenty-ten dash forty-two, an ordinance to amend the Town Center Development Standards Manual to correct the permitted use matrix regarding minor auto repair garages and product-related matters. Bill number twenty-ten dash forty-three, an ordinance to amend the downtown Centennial Plan to correct certain maps, revise requirements for tree grades, and provide related matters. Bill twenty-ten dash forty-four, an ordinance to amend the licensing regulations to replace the hotel lounge bar license and the ancillary lounge bar license, make corresponding changes to the zoning regulations, product-related matters. And finally, Bill number twenty-ten dash forty-five, an ordinance to repeal in its entirety Chapter two-point-five-six of the Municipal Code regarding system complaints about sitting employees and product-related matters.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow, will you be available on the nineteenth?
I will be.
Very good, councilman. Anthony, will you be available? Very good, and these bills are assigned to you, and we'll move on to item number seventy-three. This item is to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations. May I have a motion, please, to go into closed session?
So moved, your honor.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries, thank you. Ms. Fretwell, do you have any idea how long closed session may last?
No one could be there.
Really? All right, then, let's get back here, let's say one-thirty, one-thirty? One-fifteen? No, one-thirty.
Start the afternoon session.
One-thirty. Yeah, and then we'll go into closed session right away. Okay, that's where we are.
Are we running closed session now?
Yes, now.
Yeah, is there a camera? Okay, what do you call?
Thank everybody for being patient with us, we had a... We had a closed-door meeting regarding labor negotiations, and that's the reason that we were tied up. We'll start off by calling item 74 first. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or the acting wish to be strictly or held in the bay is to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a couple, three items. Item 75 is a property at 1300 Fremont Street, property owner SP Fremont LLC. Met your address at the other base until November the 3rd, 2010 meeting. Item 80 is a second review, 37363, African owner lied, or lead foundation trust on 2.81 acres at 3901 West Charleston Boulevard. Councilman Tarkanian would like that to be held in advance until our April the 6th, 2011, requested by Councilman Tarkanian. And 82 is a special use permit, 38607, African Shabat of Southern Nevada owner, Shabad California, 6029 Charleston Boulevard. Councilman Tarkanian would like that to be held in advance until our December the 1st, 2010 meeting. The reason I kind of hesitated on that April the 6th, that's my wife's birthday. Anyhow, I won't forget it. Your Honor, are there any other items we need to be forward at this time, councilmembers? Saying none, I'll make the most to take these three items and take, do the appropriate action, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries, thank you. We'll now go back to the item which was trailed from this morning. Item 41, approval of award of contract number 100234-DF, detention center privatization study, Office of Administrative Services, award recommended to management of America, Inc., in the amount of $106,289 from the general fund. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Your Honor. I make a motion that we would hold this in advance to our next meeting, which would be October the 20th of this year, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post? Did you want to be heard?
Yes, please.
Okay, fine, well, we already had the vote. All right, okay. Let's see, motion carries. We'll go to items 76 and 77, they're on our consent agenda. They're considered to be routine, they're recommended for approval by the Department of Planning and Development. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, we would follow staff's recommendation for approval, this item, for all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries, thank you. Item 78 and 79. 78 is VAR 38114, request for variance to allow a nine-foot-tall menu board where seven feet is the maximum height allowed, and to allow an incidental sign, a clearance arm that is 13 feet tall, 27 square feet in area, and contains a logo making up 67% of the sign area, where seven feet in height, 12 square feet in area, and 50% logo coverage are allowed. 79 is MSP 38116, request for major amendment to a previously approved master sign plan, pardon me. The applicant owner is Seabreeze Village Roman Number 2 LLC. The project is located on .52 acres at the northeast corner of Buffalo Drive and Vegas Drive. The planning commission recommends approval, and staff recommends denial of both of these items. These items are in Ward 1. They're public hearings, which I now declare open. Are you representing the applicant, sir?
I am.
All right, please tell us who you are, and we'll be happy to hear from you.
My name is Steve Rosenbloom, with National Sign and Marketing Corporation and VSCO, or Visual Information Systems Corporation. We represent the applicant, Seabreeze Village, and be happy to answer any questions.
All right, very good. Do any of the councilmembers have any questions at this time? Folks, a public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard?
I make it real swift, this is the same, when you got one and four and against, when you have the planning, and then you have the staff, and you got to find and out, with a split like that, it's so much fun to make y'all, see what kind of decision y'all going to come to, so whatever, have fun with it. Both, 78 and 79, okay?
Anybody else like to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
You're Steve, right?
I am.
Okay, and Stephen, you and I spoke yesterday.
Absolutely.
And the proposal that you had, one of them refers to increasing the proposed menu board from nine feet to seven feet, where the maximum height is allowed at seven, which would be a 29% deviation. But the increase of the menu board, I think, will be on the backside of the building, with little, if any, showing to the front, and it provides a greater ease of ordering for customers, might even be safer because they're not squinting and trying to see, and it's very clear for them.
That's correct.
However, the next item that you had there included four separate variances, and that was for the arm that would go across. In fact, if you go back to that first picture that you had, and that, and that's the arm, right?
That is correct.
That's the arm. And on that one, you would be having seven feet to about 13 feet, which is almost double, well, yes, almost double. As far as height is concerned, you'd have 12 feet to 27 feet, which is a 125% deviation in the area involved. 50 to 67 feet as far as the deviation in the sign area that would have the loco, the logo on it. I think I'm a little loco after this morning, sorry, guys. Look at, the only one listening is the mayor.
Of course. No, the funny part about it is, the councilwoman, she's been-
I think, I said, I think we're all loco. I'd included you. Anyway, what I'm saying is, the number of variances is quite large, and really, variances are to be given in case of a situation that is not caused by the applicant him or herself. And so, my motion would be to approve on this item, allowing the nine-foot-tall menu board where seven feet is the maximum, maximum height allowed, and that would be my full motion.
If I may, just to clarify, so that we have it, the condition change to the variance would be that only the variance for the menu board is hereby approved, and the condition change on the master sign plan is that conditions of variance 38114 shall apply.
Yes.
So that links the two.
That links 78 and 79?
Correct.
That's right.
All right, so that'd be a motion as to both of those items?
So that, that links 79 to that approval.
Can't do that, one at a time. All right, the clerk says one at a time.
Then the condition on variance 38114, there would be an additional condition, only the variance for the menu board is hereby approved.
All right, that's the motion?
That's the motion.
Can I make one quick comment? I know that we did discuss the monument sign as well, and I didn't want to lock that out of the, which is the amendment to the master sign program, the second one, which is in conformance. I just want to make sure that we didn't miss that.
Right, my understanding, I asked Doug yesterday, is that's just included, so it's fine, no problem.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't miss that, thank you.
Very good, let's vote then. Post? Motion carries, thank you. And 79, please.
And then 79, would you repeat that again, Margot, just so I have-
Yes, Mayor, and Councilwoman, that that, we would add a condition to MSP 38116, the condition of variance 38114 shall apply.
And that's my motion.
Very good, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries, good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 81 is RQR 38940, required review, public hearing. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor. The owner is Reese Ward-Paul and Hyatt Trust. Required review of an approved special use permit for a 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 1701 South Decatur Boulevard in Ward 1. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval, subject to conditions, it's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, Rod Carter, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor, we concur with all the conditions, and we respect your approval moving forward.
Very good. Any questions to Mr. Carter? All right, folks, a public hearing, if you'd like to be heard. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Move to approve.
Let's vote, please.
With all conditions.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 83 is SUP 38864, special use permit, public hearing. The applicant is Aslan Bale Bonds, the owner Charleston Towers LLC. Request for special use permit for 1,100 square-foot bail bond service at 714 and 716 South Penn Street. This is in Ward 3. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval, subject to conditions, it's a public hearing, which is now declared open. Gentlemen?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm Darrell Tillen, I represent Aslan Bale Bonds.
Derek Sargent, Aslan Bale Bonds.
Be happy to hear from you, gentlemen.
Well, we had actually complied with all the stipulations as far as signage, designation of parking areas, a handicap ramp, as well as a handicap parking space.
Okay. Any questions for the council?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the location area on special map page of the backup, and it has the circle, I guess that's the notice area. The office building that I own is 10 feet outside that circle. If I was in that circle, would I have that same disclosure that we normally make, where my property will not be affected any differently than any other property, so I feel comfortable that I can vote on this?
That's correct, and because it's not within that notification ring, you don't need to make that disclosure.
Well, just out of an abundance of caution, because I think that notification ring touches my parking lot. I'm going to make that disclosure, which is, I own property that's either at or right on the border of the notice area. I don't think this application will affect my property any differently than anybody else's property, so I feel comfortable that I can vote and be fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing, folks.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. During the planning commission meeting, we had assurances that the landscaping was going to be nice, and I want to make sure of that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Farlow, I am too. I'd like to see a picture. What are you going to do with the landscaping over there?
The landscaping, we just, we're using rocks.
That's not very pretty.
Oh, nobody informed us that we had to do anything.
You haven't come and met with me, so I have no idea. I know what staff, when they staff briefed me, I know what they told me, but I never seen any type of, plan at all for any, any kind of landscaping at all at this location.
Well, actually, I got thrown into this late, the young lady that was handling it, Corinne Alfaro, she recently left our employ, so-
I'm going to ask you to hold this in advance for two weeks, so I have a chance to meet with these people, and I would like to see, in two weeks, I'd like to see some type of landscaping present at our meeting.
All right, so, gentlemen, what that means is, in the next two weeks, all the council, Mayor Pro Tem's office set up an appointment with them-
Okay.
And make sure that you get this resolved, everyone satisfied.
Not a problem.
Very good. Thank you. That's the motion. Did you want to be heard?
The job will be great, a couple of weeks from now.
Okay, fine. Let's vote on that, then. Post?
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 84 is SUP 38866, special use permit, public hearing. The applicant is Leslie Wilburne. The owner is Luke Lobato LLC. Request for special use permit for a 775-square-foot massage establishment with waivers of the distance separation requirements to allow 100 feet from a school where 400 feet is required, 0 feet from a residential use for 400 feet is required, and 230 feet from another massage establishment where 1,000 feet is required at 9061 West Sahara Avenue in Suite 104. This is in Ward 2. The staff recommends denial, the planning commission recommends approval. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, Mayor?
My name's Leslie Wilburne. I'm the applicant. I was just here for approval.
Okay, did you want to tell us anything about your establishment?
Is there, do I can show the brochure?
Yes, certainly, we have the overhead, if you just put it in the middle of the screen there. We have the overhead, please. It has to be within the box?
This middle box here?
Yes, please. Does that, I don't see it. Okay, could you make it a little more clear? Not you.
Oh.
Yeah, let them, right there is perfect, and let's see whether they could focus it. And that's pretty tough, because you have things underlined and everything, but why don't you go out and tell us what you want us to-
I didn't have that last time. Basically, it's a family massage practice, which we don't have here, and I think is very important. I'm an ex-nurse in the military, so I have a lot of medical background, and I specialize in body care from infantry all the way up to elderly. So what I want to bring to the valley, just to kind of educate everybody, because infant massage, children massage, sport, everything from youth to coaches to just everybody in general, has kind of gone, you know, without education. So I want to pretty much bring that to the valley. Like I said, from infants, teach moms how to do infant massage, youth massage, regular adult massage, everything from classes, pretty much anything you can think of, is what I want to have in this practice. And like I said, there is not one here in Vegas, probably the closest one is in California. So I think it's really important just to get those words out, especially for those that hear the word massage and automatically think a negative thought. For those people, if they can just please come out and see what it's about, because all massage is not negative, this is very legit and therapeutic and beneficial.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions, Ms. Wilburne? Okay, folks, it's a public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard. Please identify yourself for the record.
I got 123 today. This, according to what I've been reading here, and you got, you know, the variances, and then you have the denial by, by staff, and then you have approval by the commission. The point is, it's got, you know, various areas where it falls within certain criteria, but since it's not a 24-hour, and it's not an all-adult type thing, and like you said, the lady's kind of flexible with children, and, you know, helping those that have a slight handicap or whatever, so we sound, it's massage, but it's low-profile. And so, I know the decision is y'all, but what I'm trying to say, we're very carefully, that's all I'm asking. This time, I feel kind of obligated that if it's low-profile, I recommend y'all take a good look at it, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard at this time?
Mayor?
Yes, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Farlow?
Yes. What would be your hours of operation?
My hours of operation, the latest is Friday until 8:00 PM. I am aware of the 9 o'clock last hour. Monday through Thursday is 9 to 6, I think, and Friday is 8 to 8. That's with the late hours for people that get off at 7:00. And then Saturday is, I think, till 6:00, and Sunday is just until 3:00.
Okay, and what separates you, for example, from the traditional massage company? What is it that you specialize in, or do differently than the average massage license?
Okay, I've been working for high-end spas here for the last six years, and the thing that separates me, first off, is they cater to adults only. There are no clients 18 and under that can enter into those establishments, whereas they need massage just as well as the 18 and over crowd. So that right there separates me from it. And then another one is, with that being said, the adults that do go into those spas or any other massage establishment, it's not family-friendly, so children are not welcome there, so that stops a lot of clients from going and getting themselves pampered
there, so that stops a lot of clients from going and getting themselves pampered or getting, um, a needed service or anything like that. Whereas mine, everyone's welcome, even if you come in with your child, there are things for the children to do while the parents do receive their services.
Okay, and my next question there, uh, this, this question is more so to Margot. Margot, I'm looking at the backup and just trying to get an understanding of the distance separation. What, what is the... Help me understand the, the distance separation from, is it from another massage establishment?
Ma'am, councilman, as you know, the, the distance is from, measured from the property lines, and you have, um, a school within a hundred feet, and then residential is adjacent, and then there's another use in the facility, um, on the property. This unit is, um, within a property with several other buildings, and therefore that, that, uh, note, that, uh, distance requirement is from the entire property.
And what, and the distance separation is fifteen hundred feet?
It is, um, four hundred required from a school and from the residential use, and a thousand from other res, uh, massage uses is what's required.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the council? I, I closed the public hearing. Did you want to be heard?
Yes, my sister, she kind of nodded to come speak.
No, yeah, she's fine. Yeah, if you want to talk, you can talk. I, I'll open up the public hearing.
Sorry, uh, my name's Kenesha Matlock, and I'm just here to support my sister because I do a lot of community service and volunteer for cheerleading around the community, and we get a lot of pulled muscles, and she's been very supportive to actually offer her services for free to my girls, and it's been very beneficial for the past six years. And I'm just here to support her.
Well, that's very nice.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing then, and this is Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you. Uh, Leslie, welcome. Uh, I did watch your presentation at the planning commission meeting, and I was very impressed with the fact that you are offering something that's a little different. This is not what we would call a typical massage therapist's business, because you intend to offer this to the whole family, not just adults. Uh, is there really a market, though, for infants and children, uh, to need this kind of service?
Yes. Um, the infant market will grow once the parents learn about it, but as far as youth, um, especially the school-aged child, and almost every child in the valley is an athlete in some type of sport, whether it's, um, a sport for the community or a sport for school, very, very important for the longevity of the sport. Um, depending on the sport, I specialize in every sport, so just to, um, um, so there's not as many, you know, like you said, pulled muscles or broken bones or anything like that, it's very important to keep that child maintained.
Tell me about your background again. Did you say you were ex-military?
Ex-military, I was a nurse in the Navy for eight years.
Okay, you've been a massage therapist at a private hotel here for six years?
For six years. Green Valley Ranch and Golden Nugget, as well as my in-home private practice I've been doing.
Okay, so you've been a massage therapist for six years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you want to open up your own business?
Yes.
You're tired, you're tired of working for somebody else, you want to go out on your own and open up your own business?
That's kind of all I know. My, uh, grandfather was one of the first entrepreneurs here in Vegas with Larry Seiden Sound, so I was kind of raised as a entrepreneur.
Normally, I would be a little cautious about allowing another massage, uh, business so close to a residential area, uh, but I'm thinking about making a motion to give you a try. Uh, in your justification letter, you emphasize infant massage therapy, sport massage for kids and adults, foot and scalp massage, injury massage, as well as small spa parties for kids and adults. Uh, if you were to guesstimate what portion of your business would be for those kinds of services other than for single adult services? Could you do that?
Um, probably about seventy-five percent, but with the single adult services, most of those as well are, um, injury-related or medically related, so...
And in your justification letter, you say that your hours of operation will be eight A.M. to six P.M., Monday through Thursday, eight A.M. to eight P.M., Friday and Saturday, nine A.M. to three P.M. on Sunday.
And it's changed a little slightly.
Okay. Um, when you say your hours of operation will be such and such, does that mean that business closes, or you take your last appointment up till, up till the time of closing?
Um, if it's open till eight, the last appointment is at seven.
Okay, so if it's open till eight o'clock, uh, patrons are gone at eight o'clock?
Absolutely.
Okay, so what are you proposing now for your hours of operation? Because you just said it's different from your justification letter.
It's just a little different.
Tell me, tell me what you're proposing.
Monday through Thursday is nine to six, Friday is ten to eight, Saturday is eight to six, and Sunday is nine to three.
You went real fast. Monday through Thur, Monday through Thursday, nine to six.
Monday through Thursday, nine to six, Friday, ten to eight, Saturday, eight to six, and, um, Sunday is nine to three.
Okay, and you will agree that the business will be closed at those hours, not taking your last appointment?
Right.
Okay. Um, you said that you are going to be the sole therapist in your practice, but you may have other massage therapists on call?
Yes.
You understand that if you do have other massage therapists on call, they have to be licensed?
Yes.
Okay, are you going to be careful in who you hire?
Yes.
Because this is your business?
Yes.
And you want to protect your business. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, can I do, I guess this would be a question for Margot, a, um, six-month review?
Ma'am, uh, councilman?
Should I make a motion for, for approval with a six-month review?
We have a condition proposed at this time, and you may amend that as you see fit. It reads that an administrative review shall be required one year after issuance of the business license. You may, of course, change that if you're thinking six months, and then you may choose if you want it to be administrative or a public hearing.
I'm all in favor of your business. I want to give you an opportunity to do well, but I'd like you to come back in six months just to make sure everything's doing good.
Okay.
So my motion would be, are we ready for a motion?
No, I have one question. Ms. Wilburn, will my picture be in the massage brother?
Absolutely. Will you be at the grand opening?
I, if I'm invited, I certainly will.
I'm going to add a condition. Uh, the condition, and this is for your own good, that you not have a picture of Mayor Goodman, because the last massage therapist business that had a picture of Mayor Goodman went out of business. Am I right?
Well, we, we, we closed them down and took their license, that's what I'm saying.
Closed them down and out of business is kind of the same thing.
All right, then we're ready for a motion?
My motion is, uh, for approval, consistent with, uh, the planning commission's recommendation for this special use permit with a six-month review before council, uh, with the hours as Leslie has proposed.
And if I may, I have the one, that would be a change to condition number one, there shall be a review six months after issuance of business license at a public hearing of the city council. And I just want to check to make sure that we will amend condition number five to indicate that the business shall be open only nine to six, Monday to Thursday, ten to eight, Friday, eight to six, Saturday?
Yes, ma'am.
And nine to three, Sunday.
Why do you want, why do you want to close on Saturday at six, when you're gonna be open until eight on Friday?
Because I only wanted to do one late day.
Okay. Okay, good, good.
So far.
That's good. Okay, uh, yes, with those conditions, uh, as amended, my motion is for approval.
Let's vote, please. Post.
Question real quick. If my hours do change, is that something I need to bring before you?
Not before, as per, uh, to the city's intention.
Ma'am, if I may, she'd have to do a review of condition, and that'd be, be through the planning department.
If they're less, less hours, if I may, if they're less hours, it doesn't require a review, but if it is more, yes, then it does.
My suggestion, with your permission, ma'am, would be, let's try these hours for six months. If you want to come back and, like Margot said, if you want to lessen the hours, you don't have to do anything, but if you want to expand the hours, ask us in six months.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I just wanted to ask a question if I could. I had item eighty-one obeyed for sixty days, and I just wanted to know if, um, no, I'm sorry, I had item number, um,
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two obeyed for sixty days, and I wondered if I could change that to thirty, and the reason is I met the lady outside. Uh, do we need to make, uh, a vote or something? During, during the luncheon break, I met the lady involved. She had not contacted me before, and I think we can do this in much less time, and it would help her.
I'd like to reconsider item eighty-two, please.
All right, uh, we'll call it, item eighty-two. As you, uh, let's have a motion that be consideration first, please vote. Post. Motion carries, and, uh, the, uh, your new motion, councilman?
Is to obey for thirty days rather than sixty, thirty days.
Okay, and that's the one? Very good. That's the motion. Let's vote, please. Post.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item eighty-five, Madam Clark, would you please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements? Thank you. Uh, eighty-six is citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to, to speak to us, please step up to the mic, give us your name, and we'll put the three-minute timer on. Ms. Bridges, Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North 19th Street. Council, on the seventeenth of September, on the public television, uh, public broadcasting network, there was a, uh, a program called Need to Know, and it brought out, uh, a problem with residential care facilities. This one happened to be in Seattle, Washington. Excuse me, if I get mad on this. The city had cut back because of budget cuts, had, had cut back on the, on the, on the, on the overseeing of the, of the thing. They didn't have, they cut back on the personnel. The residential care facilities, I think there was three of them, the people actually died of their bed sores. It was just nothing more than torture. I don't want that, see that happen in, in the city. And I know that we have to make the budget cuts and that, but during the planning commission, we have more residential care facilities coming back for appro, for approval. How do we balance the overseeing of these residential care facilities with, with the budget cuts? Because we cannot allow that to happen in this city. So, that's, that's just what I'm throwing out, but this has to be looked at.
All right, that's probably something that should be brought to the health, to the attention.
The second thing is, I've been angry with the banks for a long, long time, and I've been bitching and moaning all the time. Now we find out that twenty-two states have brought the banks to bear, and the, the banks on these foreclosure things, we find out that they're lying in the court documents, and they'll get away with it. But still, there's a reason that I get mad, um, on, when we allow these, these banks to get, to get away with their foreclosure and then not upkeep their properties and stuff like that. And I mean, now we're finding, like I say again, now we're finding out they, they lied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, hello, uh, my name is the Lord Jesus Christ, also known as R. Joshua Collins. As many of you know, Jesus, the name Jesus comes from Joshua, Yeshua. Um, I recently have a website put up, www.jesushasreturned.tk, uh, for those interested. That's jesushasreturned.tk. And just to remind people, the recession is a result of the judgment of God. Revelation eighteen eleven says, "The merchants will weep, because no one buys their cargo anymore when Christ comes to judge." At the showdown on Foremaster Street, the trial that they won last year was the judgment of God that everyone's waiting for, for Christ to come and judge in righteousness. "I am the Christ-anointed one, to fight for the poor and the meek of the earth." And recently, I, I heard a statement from Councilman Barlow in the paper that he didn't want to see homeless parks, and that really grieved my spirit. And I, I know that, uh, from two thousand and seven to through two thousand and nine, the unemployment rate has tripled, so obviously, we're gonna have a lot more homeless people out there, homeless families, and I, I would encourage Councilman Barlow to repent and to, to consider the poor, and not be arrogant, and, and haughty, and proud, and, and, and to look, uh, at the people that are on the bottom of society that need some help, you know, more than just saying, "Well, all the homeless are bad." There's a lot of rich people that are bad and wicked and headed right for hell, and the people that don't consider the poor a, and, and come against me, the Lord, are gonna go to hell also. You have anything to say?
You're the one, you're the one who's speaking, sir.
I'm just asking him.
Uh, please continue.
Okay, but, uh, also, I was hoping to see the, the, uh, Mr. Jervick, is he here right now to talk to, or at all, or I wanted to bring something up with him?
He's not here.
Not here, okay. Um, also, just to remind the city council, under Nevada rights statutes, chapter two zero one, you're to uphold good morals and public decency, as I've warned you multiple times, and that's not happening, and that's treason under S. one ninety-six. Also, uh, under state law, abuse, neglect, exploitation, and isolation of older persons and vulnerable, vulnerable persons, excuse me, is illegal. That includes depriving food, shelter, and clothing, needed services, which are necessary to maintain physical and mental health. And by jailing homeless people or homeless veterans, whoever they are, you know, that, that's obviously neglecting, exploiting, isolating, and abusing poor people and, and people that are, uh, in vulnerable positions. So I encourage the council to, to, to obey the laws of the land that are already in place as well as God's laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Right, please, I just want to, for the, uh, for the record, um, I just wanted to just clear the air just real briefly as it relates to my comments that were, uh, brought forward in the media as of recently as it relates to the James Gay Park. Our parks, no matter what community they're in, um, parks are there for a purpose, a purpose for, uh, individuals to come there and enjoy themselves. There are places in which the homeless, um, cannot encamp in one of those areas within the city or within our parks as far as making it a permanent place of habitat and refuge twenty-four hours. And so for that, uh, my comments were that it's okay for anyone to visit our parks. However, the parks are not designed to house twenty-four hours, seven days a week, individuals who, uh, take up habitat on, um, city's property in that respect. So I just wanted to just make sure that my comments were clear for the record as it relates to the reversion of the James Gay Park that, uh, once was a children's park is now split for family and children. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the record, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Adam Hargyle, one, two, three, today, so I'm making real fast. Uh, we know that we're getting more and more homeless people in our great nation, uh, but, uh, the park is for the, uh, for the recreational, for everybody, and, and the homeless are working, go out in and decorate too, and if they want to get a little nap or whatever, and kind of help themselves out, but to set up tent, you know, and just plain move into the park, well, that shouldn't be acceptable, so. Uh, Barlow, sometime when you say something, you have to explain yourself to the purpose that it's well-taken. Sometime, it's things are thrown out of context because we don't say, you know, to cover the whole situation. So what I'm trying to say, I'm against anybody living in the park. Uh, my wife threw me out, I'm just joking, whatever. All I'm trying to say is, uh, that, we, we shouldn't take that, uh, as, uh, you know, and blame it all on you, that ain't fair, because, uh, my wife is concerned about that park that's in, in Reese Districts over there on, uh, Maryland and, uh, Charleston, whatever, that one, and, and I don't know what they're gonna do with that park, but my wife said, uh, the homeless need to have somewhere to go to the bathrooms and whatever, so on and so. It, it is a park, and, and as long as the homeless, like everybody has, is, is going in and out on a limited situation, then that's acceptable, okay? But I'm here today to talk about the upcoming elections for next chair for your office, and my wife told me that, "But see, Oscar, I, I'm so hurt, I, I'm more hurt of that three-term thing that you got caught in than even you, because I think that's wrong." See, you got, see, the, the mayor's position is a local government, and the state has no business preying that three and a half. That's a joke. I mean, somebody need to get that appeal as quick as possible. I'm gonna be leaving in a minute, but I'm, I'm also want to say, Mr. Ross, I need your attention, please, it's all about you. Hang on a minute, Mr. Reese. Uh, Mr. Ross, I know, I hear you finna run for the, you know, say, for the, whatever, and, uh, I was over at the county yesterday, and I, 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 that's the one thing about me, I have the record to prove everything. Uh, Mr. Brown, okay, if he had, what, if he had his way, you wouldn't be sitting up there. You wouldn't be sitting up there, you, you, you know what I'm saying, I'm saying, "Hey, I got the proof, the proof." The man, he, he was, him and you both, y'all came on with Jan and her second term, that ain't the point. You know what I'm saying, say, young man, I, I fought to get you up there, you get it? Are, are you listening? That's who the proof is. I don't even need to go there. But the name of the game is, this man want to come in the back door, do your job, Oscar, and I feel, my wife told me, say, "Don't get in, Oscar, I'm hurt over you leaving, man, don't you know you're a great man?"
Today?
Uh, whatever. But anyway, uh, but, Mr. Ross, I just want to let you know, since you haven't been on the council that long, you understand? You have to say, but, I, I don't get the proof of that, but Brown, I ran him over like a Mack truck yesterday, and if he want, bring him out, because he ain't coming in the back door. I'm sorry, quick, give me that quick three minutes, then you didn't knock that off. Have a good day, but I, I want to let you know, you're up against it on your own. So, Brown, I'm wiping him out legally, I knew it.
You're a good man, thank you.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy. No, it's terrific, it's great. I, I think I'll let everybody speak a second time. No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding, just kidding. Would anybody else like to be heard? Would anybody else like to be heard? Okay, the, we'll go on to the next item, which is 87, any member of the council wish to be heard at this time?
Just to answer, I just want to let the folks know at home, October 16th, which is a Saturday, I'm following Councilman Anthony's fine example of his shredded events, which turned out to be very successful, the first one I did, Councilman, so thank you for bringing that to bear. That will be October 16th, 10:00 a.m. to noon at Centennial Hills Active Adult Center and then of course our famous movie in the park at Centennial Hills Amphitheater on October 22nd at 8:00 p.m. And for those of you that don't know how to, it will be How to Train Your Dragon, so love to see families out there. It's free, bring the kids, bring a blanket.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor Goodman, thank you, I've got two things to talk about. The first thing is I have another missing child to tell you about this week. Today's child is only 14 years old and has been missing since September 10th. Please turn your attention to the screen and take a look at this picture of Erica Cortez. She is a runaway and was last seen in the vicinity of Swenson and Twain. She was wearing blue jeans and a red shirt. Erica frequents the Pinewood Apartments on Swenson and also the Palo Verde and Sierra Vista area. Erica is five feet, four inches tall and weighs 110 pounds. She is Hispanic, has brown eyes and brown hair, she has also a scar on her left arm. Erica may be in the company of a 19-year-old Hispanic male named Joshua, who also know, is known as Bravo. The more people looking for this young lady, the better, because as I've stated before, through my efforts and the efforts of others, we've located about three or four of these missing runaway children in the last couple of months. This information is provided to me prior to each meeting by the Nevada Child Seekers and is also available on the website at www.nevadachildseekers.org. So if you know where Erica is, please contact Nevada Child Seekers.
Mr. Councilman?
It wasn't shown?
It was, it was shown on ours, I'm sorry, it wasn't up there.
Yeah, okay.
It was on our screen.
And more importantly, hopefully it was shown to our viewers at home.
The folks at home, that's me.
Secondly, when you're done shredding things over in Councilman Ross's ward, on October 16th, we're hosting our second annual trunk-or-treat classic car show and free Halloween festival. So go shred and then trunk-or-treat out in Ward 2.
Councilman, can we come to that?
Absolutely, personal invitation, but you have to wear a costume.
This isn't good enough.
Well, you're wearing your costume. This trunk-or-treat event will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 16th, in the parking lot of the Veterans Memorial Leisure Services Center in Summerlin, right next to Palo Verde High School. In addition to the great classic cars, which will be decorated for Halloween, there'll be fun activities for the kids, including free craft projects, face painting, jump houses, and games. The Lead Discovery Children's Museum is bringing out an activity for the kids and Debbie Levy with Art Starts Here is providing a free make-your-own Halloween mask art project. Additionally, we're going to have live music from the band Route 66, food, community vendors, and most importantly, there's a company called Roos &amp; More, R-O-O-S &amp; More, they're bringing out several animals, animals! We're going to have live animals at our, we're going to be there, at our trunk-or-treat show, including a capuchin monkey, a boa constrictor, a toucan, and other animals. So I challenge my colleagues, including bicyclists, to have events where you bring out live animals, because I think this might be a first. Once again, it's a great classic car and Halloween festival, October 16th, out of the Palo Verde High School parking lot, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
That's one animal, which is your monkey, there's one reptile, which is your boa, and there's one toucan, which is a bird, so.
They're all animals.
Forget about it.
They're all animals.
Okay, Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Once a month, thanks to you, Mayor, I have piggybacked with you in regards to starting the Coffee with the Councilman. So the first Thursday of every month at the corner of Bonanza and Rancho, I have coffee with the Councilman from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Please come out, should you like to speak with me or just share with me any concerns or comments that you may have as to how with that we're going to continue to improve. Fabulous Ward 5, please come out, that will be tomorrow, Thursday, the first Thursday of every month, Rancho and Bonanza, Starbucks, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m.
The way you look, you probably have a lot of people out there looking at you.
Right? Wait till you see my legs. Why am I wearing this hat?
This is, this is a family channel, though, Councilman.
And we're going to keep it that way, Mayor.
I'm sure they're going to ask, why are you wearing a helmet?
We're going to keep it that way. Why am I wearing this, this cyclist's hat? Well, the RTC, the Regional Transportation Commission, is hosting an event, a very special event, and Mayor, I will be on behalf of the City of Las Vegas and this council, I will be riding 23 miles to, in, in, in honor of, or as you say, in support of cancer patients around the world. There will be well over 2,000 cyclists that will be participating in the Viva Bike Vegas 2010 this weekend. If I may, I would just like to share with you that the, that this year's Viva Bike Vegas event features two professional cyclists, and I'm not one of them, but I will be a part of the cyclists as a, as a body. Andrew Penfold and Max Jenkins from the United Healthcare Pro Cycling Team presented by Maxxus will lead the 115-mile cycling century ride alongside Regional Transportation Commissioner, I'm sorry, the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, RTC General Manager Jacob Snow. RTC Viva Bike Vegas 2010 presented by Vector Media on Saturday, October 9th. The United Healthcare Pro Cycling Team presented by Maxxus is one of the most successful cycling teams in North America. At the core of the 2010 team is a group of both veteran cyclists and talented younger and up-and-coming riders, such as myself. So with that being said, Mayor, the United Healthcare Pro Cyclists, if you're going to ride, you may pick up your packets on Saturday, October 9th, but also you have an opportunity to meet with these professional cyclists on Thursday, which is tomorrow, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., or on Friday, October 8th, at 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They'll also be available, as I mentioned, on Saturday, so wish me luck. I have all of my gear and my number ready to go and will take off at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday morning from the RTC. And my route would be to cycle from Alta and, and Martin Luther King all the way up to the 215, and, and mind you, that is going uphill, so absolutely, right, right down the middle of Ward 2. Thank you.
Through Ward 1.
Through Ward 1.
You better get on the sidewalks to cheer.
Please do, throw me a water bottle or something.
Let us know the time.
But I'm looking forward to, to the ride back down because it's going downhill and, and I'll be able to relax a little bit, but going uphill during the first part of the day should be a pretty good experience and also the weather's going to be pretty nice, so I just wanted to just put that out there to thank the RTC for a wonderful job well done in regards to supporting such a great cause.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other council members wanting to be heard? All right, seeing none, hearing none?
Mayor, your Planner of the Year Flynn Fag will be riding in the race the entire 115 mile.
Is that the one that will go over the dam?
Going over the bridge, yes.
Yeah, this is pretty exciting, actually.
It's, it's pretty exciting and he'll do the whole 115.
That's terrific. All right, that's great, meetings adjourned.